Which is the Silverline Market Assessment and Economic Development Strategy Presentation by Christina Day, Director of Planning, and Chris Brewer, Real Estate Economist with AECOM.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. We are glad to be presenting the Silverline Market Assessment and Economic Development Strategy to you this evening. So the purpose of this was related to construction of DART's new Silverline Rail Station. It also includes trails along this area. So you see in yellow on the slide with the stars, those are the two new stations in Plano. We've had substantial interest in private investment, and this is an economic development catalyst for southeast Plano and the greater downtown area. So we are wanting to look more closely at the economic capacity within this area. So what we did was hire AECOM to help us look at the strengths and challenges of these station areas related to land use. We're trying to understand how the demand is driven and the growth in land values. We also are looking for, to understand the redevelopment potential in the area. And so the report has produced some topologies that will help answer some of those questions for us. We're hoping that the study can be used to inform future decisions in the study area, specifically city-initiated planning activities. When the Planning and Zoning Commission looked at this roughly a month ago, they did want to initiate a review of zoning in the area for consistency with our findings, as well as the comprehensive plan, and also look at the area plans within a half mile of these stations as called for again in the comprehensive plan. So with that, I will turn it over to Chris Brewer. He is the Economic Development Lead for the project, again with AECOM. He brings 25 years of experience and has completed projects around the country, including Texas and the metroplex. I'm also joined by Drew Bronner, who's our Lead Planner in Comprehensive Planning, who was the lead on this project. So with that, Mr. Brewer.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to present tonight. This process is one that's been going on for more than a year now in terms of understanding the trends that we've seen play out across Plano and the broader metroplex area. You know, in many respects, our scope of services was very straightforward, understanding stakeholder interviews, understanding the broader economic and demographic trends, and then really trying to make this connection between what we're seeing from a real estate standpoint and what's going on with those underlying land values. Now, obviously, this is happening in the midst of COVID, so we're trying to understand two equally important things. Number one is, what was the pre-COVID trend? And we are going to see that reemerge. Or number two, has COVID created a new dilemma, a new market, and we have to understand that complete shift? And when we did this presentation five weeks ago, I was actually fairly certain that the dust was starting to settle and that we started to understand what, you know, post-COVID might look like. And then, obviously, Russia invaded three days later, and, you know, we're now in a very different place, although I would say the dust will eventually settle. But 30-year mortgage rates at 5% is a different paradigm in terms of housing affordability. So there are definitely going to be some things that, as this potentially lasts longer, we'll start to see some impacts in terms of demand for multifamily versus single family. So again, thinking about that, those dynamics, something I have to think through in this process because COVID is, at least in my experience for the last 25 years, a very different recession compared to the ones that I grew up with over the last 25. So again, as we go through our process, thinking about the 12th Street Station Silverline proposed and the Shiloh Road Station, I think the thing you start to appreciate with this simple aerial is just the differences in the two places. So obviously, 12th Street, we've got our mix of our downtown. We've got this older industrial district north of the tracks, and then we have an established contemporary industrial district south of the tracks. So a very specific mixed set of uses, whereas Shiloh is almost exclusively either single-family industrial with a little bit of retail, so it's entirely single-use in nature. And I think that characterization of use, but also some of the implications we're seeing for land value and market demand become really important when you think about particularly the older industrial properties north of the railroad tracks where we've seen a lot of infill development happen. But we're also now seeing speculation with much smaller parcels where it's just not the right size for what we call a Texas wrap, you know, apartments wrapped around parking. So we have a parcel size question in some of these neighborhoods. But again, those dynamics of two very different stations is one of those key things to think about. The trends we're seeing at one might be a little different from the other is an important notion. We think about the economic and demographic context. I think just a couple of simple metrics that we were paying attention to over the course of the study. I think, number one, Plano did better during COVID than other cities, so employment growth more white-collar nature. Again, a real, one of the key things we're looking forward to post-COVID is this notion of remote workers and now hybrid workers, and do they go back to the office? I think one of the policy questions that we're going to have to pay attention to is, what are the fiscal implications of hybrid work? If people don't go to the offices often, what does that mean in terms of real estate values for office space? We'll have to pay attention to that. But I think also, particularly for our study areas, we have a significant mix of flex office and industrial activities that are actually driving significant attractive wages and good-quality jobs. So that mix south of the railroad tracks becomes an important thing to pay attention to, particularly for some of those industrial uses that maybe 10, 15 years ago we wouldn't have encouraged. But now with e-commerce and also potential for growth in manufacturing post-COVID, we might actually see stronger demand for some of these locations. So one of the things we have to pay attention to in this study is, you know, is to what extent is residential driving land values or, in fact, e-commerce and industrial driving land values, something we'll have to pay attention to. Some of the residential market perspectives, really an interesting dynamic in terms of thinking about, you know, first, obviously, the single-family conversation. Obviously, really going back to, say, 2010 Plano approach build-out, we started to see a much smaller share of single-family development, but also a significant increase in land values tied to single-family construction. And again, these, this reality of less and less land available is starting to have an influence in terms of demand and what people are willing to build. I think the one thing we've always paid attention to up to this point is that we had a millennial generation in particular that continued to rent rather than own, and that really sort of influenced our development community. They doubled down and built more rentals in the last 10 years. So it was a trend that we wouldn't have been surprised by. But I think even when we looked at some of our boomer generation people, even those household groups were more willing to rent than own, which I think was a surprise to a lot of people. The net result was a lot of increased demand for apartments. Again, there's really important things here post-COVID. We are expecting to see bigger houses, which obviously a bigger house means a more expensive house, so it gets to a really important affordability question. And not just workforce housing, affordable housing, but just reasonably priced housing becomes an important policy question. We will say broadly for this region, I think, economic development-wise, housing availability is going to be the key issue for the next 10 years that we have to pay attention to. But also ultimately, again, thinking about right now and the extent to which the war in Ukraine does not come to some end soon, mortgage rates at 5% really starts to change the housing dynamic. We have to pay attention to that as well. On the multifamily side, I think, sort of an interesting story that we were paying close attention to, again, broadly across the metroplex, a real surge in multifamily construction. I think what we were surprised by is that in Plano, city got a relatively small share of that new construction. And we, in general, saw that the rents for the apartment projects built in Plano tended to be higher than the regional average. So we were getting a higher-value product relative to regional averages, which I thought was a positive trend. But again, thinking about this notion of where we go from here, our main issue, particularly near 12th Street, is a limited availability of parcels that are easily suitable for this sort of development. And again, on the multifamily standpoint, to me, the important thing was this notion of, you know, we were able to capture a share of multifamily at a premium to the market, which is, again, from our policy perspective, a good thing. I think the thing I would ultimately say with multifamily versus single families, we're heading into a post-COVID world where we have a significant number of single-family homes in renter occupancy, and I think people aren't as aware of that, but I think it's actually, in some ways, the more important question moving forward, in terms of paying attention to what's going on within single-family neighborhoods that used to be largely owner-occupied. I think that'll ultimately be a policy question here. But again, our main question moving forward, especially when you think about our station areas like 12th Street, is how do we start to work with those remaining parcels, which are generally smaller? We do see from our study the ability to think about a slot home product, a townhome product that can still work within that smaller site dimension. So there are still opportunities. And again, probably the biggest thing we really focused on is this reality of underlying growth in land values. And I think if you go back to decisions made by Plano 10 to 15 years ago, in many respects, the policies drove economic development, drove new infill development, they're very successful. The downside is we also had real acceleration in land values. And I think the, the good news there is we achieved significant redevelopment, but we now have a challenge of, well, the land is getting expensive. And I think as we sort of look at the availability of remaining parcels and see how many small parcels there are, we begin to that question of, okay, well, what's our next step? How do we sustain investment? How do we encourage assembly? Those become the next round of policy questions. But again, just looking at, you know, land prices at 12th Street versus Shiloh Road, significant difference in appreciation over the last 10 years, something we ultimately think about in terms of policy implications there. On the commercial market standpoint, again, a different conversation. I think office unquestionably the one segment heavily impacted by COVID. I think the, the good news that we're seeing at this point is that modern office space, contemporary construction seems to be holding up reasonably well. The newest buildings are maintaining occupancies. We're clearly seeing the beginnings of some haircuts for, you know, 10- to 20-year-old office buildings, maybe a 10% to 20% decrease in value, too soon to say if that's permanent. But clearly, for older buildings, we're seeing a lot of 50-plus percent, you know, 30-, 40-year-old buildings going back to lenders. And I think that becomes one of our questions of, we're right now at that moment where we're having a return from pure remote to hybrid, and how that ultimately plays out is going to be a big question. I tend to be more optimistic in terms of seeing people come back into the office, so knock on wood there. But again, fundamentally, for office, we're seeing this sector, I think, two very different questions come to the forefront. I think the biggest one is, we would say, a place like Plano might actually benefit from a post-COVID environment where we need smaller offices closer where people live, where they're coming in two to three days a week as opposed to the bigger office downtown is probably the one expectation we would have at this point. Probably industrial, to me, is one of those really interesting conversations because it, it covers a wealth of types of real estate at this point. And I would almost say, from a zoning standpoint, the word industrial doesn't really begin to cover what's going on in that dynamic. Again, everything from pure e-commerce to flex office to advanced manufacturing. But the one thing we've seen consistently for 10 years is growth in this type of space, increasing demand, increasing rents. And it consistently has caught us, a lot of people, by surprise coming out of the last recession. But to me, it's that one segment where we're seeing steady growth in demand, steady growth in lease rates, and it, from our perspective, a lot of the space south of the railroad tracks, seems like the market really wants it to be there, again, well-located. I think our real question, our real curiosity is this e-commerce debate moving forward. We're seeing a lot of interest in smaller warehouses closer to where people live for same-day delivery. So again, that policy question of how do we deal with same-day delivery as that grows in coming years, but these are the types of spaces the developers are looking for for that. We would also say with industrial is clearly a set of opportunities for needing to pay attention to older buildings. So the ability to shift from what would be an industrial use to, say, a coffee roaster, brewery, where it's effectively a retail use in an industrial building. And that's where I think we would start to see that shift, especially as the rents start to move above $10 to $15 a square foot. Again, retail dynamics to me are fascinating. I won't ask how many of you have your Amazon Prime cards, probably all of you. But the reality is, we're heading into a very strange moment now where we're finally seeing pure e-commerce plays actually look for brick-and-mortar space. One of the biggest things they're struggling with is returns. All the horror stories of the last two years about where the returns have or haven't gone, again, that's one thing that everyone has to get a grip on, and I think seeing some brick-and-mortar space is part of that thing. But I'm generally optimistic here. I think we are going to see a whole new crop of tenants want to, you know, sell us stuff. I think, though, in the short term, definitely a conversation about, a lot more interest in drive-throughs than there used to be. Again, one of those COVID moments about the shift in some of our priorities. So I think for us, the retail piece is going to be a little more of a challenge in the short term, but I think it's one that we'll see strong, real strength come back, particularly in a place like Plano. But again, I think it would be a different set of tenants. So again, like a Wayfair, pre-COVID, you wouldn't have thought about them as a brick-and-mortar tenant, but post-COVID, you know, they're going to be fulfilling orders from their store, people are going to be coming in and buying things well, so it might be a different real estate dynamic to think about. So what we wanted to do to try and take what we were seeing from a market demand standpoint and ultimately apply it to this conversation about land use and the types of development we would expect within these station areas. And so we wanted to try and come up with a, a set of frameworks that would allow us to sort of conceptualize a set of uses in their square foot, which is ultimately thinking about what that means from an acreage standpoint, because then we can at least start to understand, well, if the land is $15 to $25 a square foot, give or take, what's that implication for a set of uses that a developer would say, well, given that land cost, I'm prepared to build, you know, a certain amount of units per acre? And so from a residential standpoint, we came up with a pretty straightforward set of, of concepts, whether it be a slot home, a townhome, again, live-work, and then obviously some of the larger apartment, and ultimately, you know, taller multi-story projects. And again, on the commercial side, a similar framework of office, hotel, again, trying to just provide perspective as to how the market demands ultimately correlate down to what sort of parcel size do we need and what are those limits in terms of available parcel sizes. So a relatively straightforward framework. But what we ultimately wanted to do was to apply those typologies to places to start to understand, well, what does this look like? So we attacked a couple of areas from a downtown north sub-district, so this is the area on the north side of downtown. Again, a framework of our likely typologies that we would expect developers to pursue, so in this case, a slot home, townhome, or a, again, a four-to-five-story apartment complex. And again, a notion of how much new housing we might be able to add based on that framework in the lower right, and then thinking about some of the sites that are available. I think the point we would say simply here is, based on the land values that we're seeing, you know, somewhere between $15 and $25 a square foot for land, you know, that's when developers will start to think about taller buildings, and that's something we have to be prepared for. Certainly, pre-COVID, I think some of my suburbs west of Chicago, we were seeing developers pay upwards of $35 a square foot, and they're actually planning to build seven-to-15-story buildings pretty easily. And I think part of that is just there's lots of demand for multifamily, and that's where that premium comes in. But thinking about the site and parcel size and the extent to which we need to help assemble, I think the biggest thing we would always say when we're doing, you know, talking with a number of cities like Chicago right now, you always want to avoid trying to incentivize developers to overpay for land, policy goal number one. Easier said than done, but it's something we try to, you know, not have developers overpay for land if at all possible. So again, downtown south sub-district, so this is an area where we have some more solid industrial uses, but also some older uses, where we would actually see maybe some brownfield conditions, but also a lot of places we would expect to see redevelopment happen over time. And I think the one thing we would say here is a number of smaller parcels, but a loss of, a lot of property owners who have very clear notions of what their land is worth. This is probably one of those areas where we would say that it's going to take time for the market to sort of mount what's out. Certainly, a short-term, higher construction costs for housing, higher interest rates is definitely going to put a little bit of a damper on, you know, owner occupancy, we would suspect. But again, this is an area where, in many other cities, we're seeing a very similar debate about, there's a set of uses that need to be somewhere, but this is also a place where we would expect some higher values to unfold as well. So last but not least, getting to insights and implications. You know, we talk a lot about this notion of benefits of TOD. The study goes through a whole framework in terms of thinking about what our benefits of transit-oriented development are. I think there's a broad set of very clear expectations in terms of how TOD helps. For me, someone who leverages TOD, we have one less car, and I, half of my trips are on the train. So it's a relatively pragmatic framework, but we also see it in terms of, there's a host of people that do benefit in terms of, it's a lot less expensive to take the train than own a car. But the key insights, I think, that we get to is, you know, from a policy standpoint, how do we think about a set of infrastructure improvements that encourage those pedestrian-friendly elements? We think post-COVID, particularly with now, we have this very clear set of purely remote workers that we didn't have pre-COVID. Thinking about the set of amenities that will attract them becomes an actually important conversation. So parks, trail systems figure into that conversation a lot more than we would have said pre-COVID. Again, this real important conversation about our research and technology district and how we actively preserve those jobs, but also think about them as retention opportunities. So how many of these companies are ready to grow into new space, and do we have a place for them to go? So that retention piece really comes into play there. And then, last but not least, also in that same district, we do have to pay real close attention to old buildings. Again, if it's a 50-, 60-year-old building, we need to think about a set of strategies to work with the property owner to encourage maybe a change in use over time. But again, those older buildings, thinking about how they evolve becomes an important question. But then, last but not least, I think, you know, we spent the last 20 years really either building single-family homes or larger apartments, and I think this is one of those areas where there's a really interesting opportunity to get to a more diverse set of housing options. Again, the land is not cheap, but that gives us opportunities to think about how we can leverage some density to get to reasonable price points, but also a broader mix of types of product where people can actually take a train to a few places. Questions, comments?
Counsel, we have about, we have time for about two questions. Anybody have a question? Councilwoman Grady?
Just a couple of things. I read your study has some wonderful points in it, and I just wanted to add that. But I also had a couple of questions, primarily on the, on the, on the housing and the housing types. Some of the studies that I've been reading, millennials are now shifting again, especially the, the leading-edge millennials, and they're shifting into the single-family residential rather than a multifamily residential for multiple reasons and purposes. And, and I didn't, I didn't see a lot of, of data in the study that indicated that. And so my concern, when I started reading it, was we're dealing with a shift, again, in the demographics and the types of things that they want to do. And it may be that we need to be looking at, as you mentioned, different types of products that can be brought in because of the square footage of the cost of raw land to make the housing obtainable. It may be that we start taking a look at a different, at different opportunities and different types of smaller homes or smaller lots and, and being something that is a little bit more obtainable. The other thing that I saw in here was, certainly in some of the older buildings, especially when they get to be about 50, 60 years old, from a, in an environmental standpoint, from an energy standpoint, they may no longer be sustainable, and they, and it's almost a scrape and rebuild. And so I didn't see a lot of that in the study, and it may be something that we need to take a look at.
I would simply comment on the millennial side. I think in the last year, right until four weeks ago, there was a very clear trend of millennials shifting out of rental into owner occupancy. The general expectation was that they were going to, you know, skip the entry-level house, and they'd saved up money, so they were moving into, you know, that second house. And I think that was the expectation, I would suspect. It was going to be a little bit of a cool off in the short term, but there's also a practical inventory challenge, like we're just both the metroplex, but the US, we're short of housing units right now. And I think that's part of the structural piece that, but we would definitely say with the boomers stepping back, the millennial piece is clearly at the forefront in terms of demand. And I would say, on the industrial side, I think our, my biggest surprise was that industrial property south of railroad tracks, overall, it looked pretty solid to me, like we weren't seeing the kind of vacancy or the shift in tenants that we would have expected from doing a lot of work in other industrial districts. So I was pleasantly surprised, but I think north of the railroad tracks, there are clearly locations where we would see, you know, a change in use happen.
Any other questions?
Surprisingly, Councilwoman Grady asked the same, same or similar question than I did, so I yield my time.
Thank you so much.
Is that it?
That's it. Thank you for your time. We appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Item number three, Housing Trends Analysis. Lori Schwartz, Director of Neighborhood Services.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, City Executives. We are here tonight to provide an update on the housing trends analysis. And I believe that most of you were at least part of the original conversations, or at least saw some part of it, but we're just going to, to give a quick background to review kind of where we've come from. So over the last 10 years, there have been two main studies that have been done looking at our housing market. First one is the study that was done back in 2014, which is the Housing Value Retention Analysis. And the goals of this study are listed here, and it was primarily looking at recommendations for programs that would help us retain value of our housing. So we were clearly in quite a different market at that point because we were just coming out of the recession. And this slide here, this shows more of an assessment of housing market changes for neighborhood, neighborhood unit, which are about the one-mile-by-one-mile squares that Plano is based upon. And you can see that this is showing how those housing markets were shifting either internally or within the region, just trying to understand how different neighborhoods were doing over time. So when we moved into the Housing Trends Analysis in 2018, there had been a clear shift in the housing market in just that short amount of time. And so what we were looking more specifically at were market conditions at that time, specifically relating to supply and demand. And you've heard a little bit today with the Silverline presentation about how that has even changed further since 2018. So as housing prices significantly increased from the Housing Value Retention Analysis study, we also have seen housing affordability be an issue across Plano, and that was also looked at, understanding sort of the implications and the impact of that change over the last few years. And then we also looked at case studies and other jurisdictions' policies to better understand what our options were at the City of Plano for moving forward. So just as a quick timeline to, to review, this plan was originally approved back in FY 2017, 2018. We did have a, an Economic Planning Systems was our consultant at the time. They did work with an advisory committee that was appointed by City Council, and we worked with that advisory committee for about four or five months, looking at a housing survey that we did citywide, focus group meetings, stakeholder interviews, and then public meetings. So in November 2018, we brought back the final report to City Council and talked through that process in November 2018. And then in August 2019, we ended up with some updated market analysis and brought back some possible policy statements for council to consider at that time. During that discussion, council did support these three policy statements and asked that we bring back some recommendations for additional objectives and actions moving forward into November 2019. However, at that time, we were in the process of looking at the comprehensive plan update, and so the comprehensive plan review committee was created. And after discussions with city management, we did determine that we wanted to pause bringing forward any further policy objectives or actions to allow the CPRC time to work. And so that is what we did. So in November 2021, we had the adoption of our comprehensive plan. There are two specific policies that are aligned with those three policy statements that we had brought to the City Council prior to that November 2019 creation, and those are listed here for you. It's the Special Housing Needs Policy as well as the Neighborhood Conservation Policy. So under the Neighborhood Conservation Policy, there are two specific actions, NC-2 and NC-4, that reference the housing studies that we have done over the last 10 years, which is both the Housing Value Retention Analysis as well as the Housing Trends Analysis. And I also want to note that the Consolidated Plan, which is also a way of looking at housing as it relates to the federal funds that we get from the Housing and Urban Development Department, that, that's one of the things that we also look at that has housing references. So as of this point, we are recommending that we work towards completing NC-2 and NC-4 actions of the 2021 Comprehensive Plan. We will be working cooperatively with the Planning Department to continue looking and getting updated housing market data. We've already had a preliminary conversation with the Planning Department and intend to have a follow-up meeting in the next week. And then our goal is, is to take that new data, analyze it with our existing housing studies and adopted plans, and then bring some findings and recommendations back to you later this fall. But that concludes my presentation this evening. I'm available for any questions if anybody has them, but thank you.
Any questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Grady.
This is my field. A couple of things that I, I would like to, to just kind of reiterate, and maybe we can look at as we're doing this analysis. First, I did have an opportunity to read the Housing Trends Analysis. I think it's 187 pages, including the cover. The supply and demand of housing and, and the cost of housing is amplified by a lot of different, a lot of different supply and demand lines, part of which is materials, part of which is labor and costs, part of which is land values, part of which is finance. As we take a look at these types of trends and begin to develop policies for them, one of the things that I think, I think, would be helpful is we look a little bit farther out into the 10- to 20-year timeframe to get some data or get some thoughts of where those trends may go, because I don't see some of them being sustainable. We don't know, obviously, where the financial industry will go, but I think from a labor standpoint, I think from a material standpoint, we may see in the next five to 10 years a decrease in the cost of those, because part of the cost of those are those are artificially elevated due to tariffs and various other elements that have been put in, including import duties and such. So I think we need to take some of that into consideration as we define some of the policies as to whether or not the types of things that we would like built. And I think, again, we need to take a look at the types of structures so that the homes are more obtainable. And I'm not saying affordable, I'm saying obtainable from the standpoint of those that want to buy, a first-time homebuyer, especially the leading-edge millennials, of which there are millions of them, and they're beginning to buy homes. That's all I have.
Any other comments from council? Mayor, I don't want to leave you out if you have any comments or questions. All right. He's good. All right. Thank you, Lori.
All right. We will be back to see you in a few months.
Okay. Item number four, Discussion and Direction on Homeless Update, with Shanette Eden, Housing and Community Services Manager.
Well, good evening, everyone, mayor, council, city executives. Shanette Eden, and I'm here to give you an update. So we all discussed, or we talked, September 27 of last year, and I want to tell you where we are at as of now. I said I would come back after talking, and back. I want to give you where we're at right now. We had the point-in-time count this year. We do it annually. If you see on here, there's a new number added from what you saw in September, and that's a number of 103. That's the unsheltered count from our homeless census this year, that point-in-time count. That 103, though, is a little bit different because it represents only the surveys that were conducted at the Plano Overnight Warming Station. If you remember, on February, it was February the 24th this year, when we were supposed to have the homeless census, that's when the weather was really bad. And so we had to tell 100 volunteers that we weren't going to use volunteers that night. The way staff approached it is that we went to the Plano Overnight Warming Shelter and trained their volunteers that had signed up to work that night to actually go ahead and enter the survey. So there were 103 entered on that night. I say that's preliminary because we don't know if there was any other organizations that actually went out and had people come. A good example is last year, when you're looking at the numbers, there were three homeless youth that ended up at City House that night, when yet again, we had to only count who was at the Plano Overnight Warming Station. The one thing I want to point out here is when you're looking at your unsheltered homeless, because that's what this topic is going to be more focused on briefly, you see the numbers have gone up and down and up and down, but on average, it's about 100. So over the past five years, when you're looking at these numbers, I want you to remember, there's about 100 unsheltered, give or take, every single year, that we see on that one night that are staying here in Plano. You will get an updated report, but it'll be in April. So right now, if you're wondering what's going on with the data, Metro Dallas Homeless Alliance has a consultant looking at not only Collin County's data, but as well as Dallas County's data. They will produce that, and of course, on the day they're producing it, you all will have a quick, brief report for you to look at and look at those numbers, sheltered and unsheltered. So we conduct street outreach here at the city. I've mentioned this before, we've been doing it for the past year. We go out proactively at least two times a week, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. And we also take a Saturday where we are going out into our community, looking at known places where there's homeless. We go out with our police department. We're quite close and friends with them a lot of times, and sometimes we'll even take fire. They've got the community paramedics that are very helpful as well. So we'll go out together, and we will talk to people, as well as we'll go out individually. We'll have someone on the team that does that. So in street outreach, this last year, there were 304 encounters, and that's a lot. What that means is that's unique. I'm not telling you if there are 304 unsheltered homeless. Don't misread that. There are not. These encounters, although they are unique in nature, some of those individuals, they didn't sleep here in Plano. But did we encounter them? Were they on our street throughout the day? Yes, they were. As we continue going on and we look at these numbers, if you're wondering, well, how many of those are numbers that we've encountered before? A good portion, I tell you, at least 50% of this 304, we have seen those same people year after year after year that are here in Plano. And although this is a transient population, we've seen them consistently being here. Okay, so let's move on to other factors that are kind of affect how we approach homelessness, or maybe have constrained or helped us with our homeless issues here, concerns here in Plano. And this HB 1925, I know you all are very familiar with it, so I'm going to be really quick when we're talking about it. It prohibits camping in open spaces, in public spaces. That could mean, that could be on the side of a church here in downtown Plano, because I know there was a church that used to let ladies stay there. If you can see it, it's considered open, even though it's private property, that's considered an open space. So camping also means, per the law, it means to reside temporarily in place with shelter. So what in the world do I mean by shelter? I mean, are you carrying things like a sleeping bag? Are you in a tent? Are you in a tarp? Are you in any kind of handheld device, maybe to shelter you from the elements? That is included in shelter, anything like that. And as this bill says, you can't do it. So what exactly are we doing here in Plano as it relates to HB 1925? Well, when the bill came out, I think I may have mentioned this to you all, we actually went out to businesses here downtown, where the majority of our homeless are. We spoke to businesses, as well as homelessness, and gave them information just regarding to, hey, this bill does exist. Not only does it exist, but these are the confines of the bill. To our homeless, we offered services. So the bill also says that when you are encountering somebody, when you're encountering someone that is doing this, you have got to offer them alternative camping locations. So you've got to tell them, hey, this is where you can go, but you can't stay here. You also have to give them resources, social services. You have to connect them to social services and include information about human trafficking, which is really important. We hand out these, right? So when you're talking about camping, we give these to businesses, we give these to homeless individuals that we encounter, the ones that come to our office. Library has them, police has them, Parks and Recs has them. You all can have them too if you want to carry them in your car. Just tell Mark, and we'll get them to you. But what it has are all of the camping locations. So when you're looking at camping locations that are free, because typically homeless, some of our outdoor, unsheltered homeless don't have funds. The closest location, I believe, is further than 20 miles out. How about I just say that? There's a list, and you could see a long list, but I won't belabor this point. When you get to places where you have to pay, there are some sheltering places where you have to pay $7 a night, things like that. Those do exist too, but they still are far. So we are focused right now here in Plano on a three-pronged approach to addressing unsheltered homeless. The first thing we do is street outreach, which I've already said. That's something that we do. We'll do it when, if any other new bills come out, we'll definitely do it then. We continue to try to educate our homeless, as well as our business owners, as well as our residents, anytime we get the opportunity, on what HB 1925 means, but even what homeless is and how the city is addressing homelessness, whether that bill existed or whether it didn't. So in street outreach, we are going out, like I said, we are trying to interact with our homeless. They are coming into our building. It's nice that we are now located downtown, so we have great access, there's great access for our homeless individuals to come, and we help them. We provide them with services. We might give them hygiene kits, food kits, and these. The next thing that we do is service coordination, which is a big deal, because as you know, we're limited on housing and on shelters here in Plano. You know, if you're single, if you looked at that other slide, the 304 encounters, the majority of those were single men, right? And when you think about it, there aren't any places here in Plano where single men could go. If you are a youth, I've said this before, if you are a youth, or if you are a survivor of domestic violence, we have an emergency shelter here that can assist you. But as far as single men, there is not a place, other than when it's cold and we have the Plano Overnight Warming Station, there is a place there. Or you could go to the Samaritan Inn, which is transitional. Transitional means they're not going to just let you in quickly. You're going to go through a process, and then they're going to let you in. So either way it goes, we help them by working with other agencies that are located in and out throughout the county and the Metroplex. That's why HMIS is listed on this screen. It's the Homeless Management Information Center system, excuse me. We share it with a lot of other housing agencies that help homeless. So that is what we focus on. And then the third thing we do, while we're doing that service coordination, because there are more services that are outside, but while we're doing service coordination, we also have our own housing placement here in the City of Plano. We have a rapid rehousing program, and we have a tenant-based rental assistance program. Both of those programs are focused on literally housing homeless individuals, but we don't just house, we have to provide them with intense case management, and we have agencies that help us do that. So that's our approach right now. When I came before you in September, we talked about HomeARP funds. Those are funds set aside from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. These are the allowable activities. It's very specific in that these funds have to be used on homeless individuals, those that are homeless or at risk of homelessness, which is why you see these options here. The first option I mentioned before was a hotel conversion, and I'm just going to go back through them very quickly so that you all remember what was discussed in September. Hotel conversion of affordable housing units. It's going to create housing for our homeless individuals. It would actually be affordable housing, so it's not something that you would have to quickly go in and get out. It's not going to be temporary in nature, it's going to be more along, where people would end up paying rent to actually even stay there. We, of course, wouldn't operate that. We don't operate, we don't have enough staff, nor is it the city's place to necessarily operate things like a shelter. But we always have wonderful nonprofit partners that we focus on and we work with to provide these services. Typically, we will assist in providing the funding mechanism for it, but it's the nonprofit partners that are here in our community that step up and that take on the large task at hand. All right. Then we've got a regular tenant-based rental assistance program. That's something that we have already right now for homeless that have been affected by COVID. It is a lot like rapid rehousing, which you know about. That one is a 12-month program where we provide rent and utility assistance, as well as case management to homeless individuals. The key about this is that, just like rapid rehousing, you have to have some work to stay. So there has to be housing for you to move in, that you can afford, and not only that, that's willing to take payment from an organization that's not necessarily the individual standing right there in front of them as they are signing the lease. The next is hotel conversion to a non-congregate shelter. So that is an emergency shelter. We've spoken about that. I want to say, you know, while I'm talking about hotel conversion, through these months, our idea of if it is a hotel conversion, it has been expanded to maybe there's another type of commercial building. And that's how I want you all to look at these options, which I'm not asking for you to say anything about them tonight, or make a decision tonight. But let me go on to the last one. This is the community circle. This is without the use of any federal funds. This is something that could be done already. The idea is you get nonprofits together that are actually providing a specific service, and you approach homelessness one by one. So we would take someone off of our HMIS, our Homeless Management Information System, that's been through our street outreach, and then you house them. And the way you house them is you've got an agency there that's going to provide medical, somebody there is going to be their case manager, and it's a group approach to helping the homeless individual. No money attached to this one. So I ended up meeting with the housing authority. I had about five meetings over the course of these months. This last one I'm going to focus on. It's a meeting that I had with nonprofit shelter providers, as well as those that were doing street outreach. You can see the representatives here. Every shelter here in our city was on this call, and not only that, we had transitional shelters on this call, plus our emergency shelters. We had an agency that conducts street outreach here in Plano. We had another agency that is a faith-based organization, but that we lean on a lot to assist us when we can't help somebody in maybe paying for a hotel motel or for paying for their rent. They will do it when we can't, as well as representatives from the Collin County Homeless Coalition. And we discussed each of those options, obviously more in-depth than what I'm doing tonight, with them. So these are the results. What they said in that meeting is if Plano was thinking about doing anything, their best option of those four, which, mind you, those four options presented are the eligible options, in essence, that HUD would allow us to do with HomeARP funds. They said the best option would be affordable housing. They said it would need to include wraparound services, which is something that I mentioned to you all back in September, and it would. And they said it would solve the lack of affordable housing, because the problem that they expressed is, once you leave transitional housing, or once you leave the emergency shelter, if you cannot find a place where you can actually afford and stay, then it doesn't help your situation. Your time has run out. The next best option, they said, is a non-congregate shelter, but they said that needed to be a county-led initiative. Everyone on the call said, we don't have enough homeless in Plano to have our own shelter. And they were concerned about Plano even leading that. And I agree wholeheartedly with that, because we're having homeless come in from everybody, and it doesn't just need to happen in Plano. You've got other cities. McKinney has the second-largest homeless population here in Collin County. So they said that it needs to be a county-led initiative. They said the third is, hey, go ahead with another tenant-based rental assistance program. However, where are you going to find places for them to live? That was the concern, is that right now, two of our, actually, both of our domestic violence agencies have vouchers for their survivors of domestic violence. The problem is not the lack of vouchers, it's finding a place for them to stay that takes them. And then they said the community circle, they nicely said that it would be difficult for them to participate. They said that because there is no money, and in essence, we would be asking them to pull a case manager or services from where they're used to using them into a place with no funds to offset their costs that are incurring. So what are the next steps? Why exactly am I here? I'm here, when thinking about all that, I said I'm not asking you all to select an option at this time. What I am asking you to do is, I would like, we would like, the city to go ahead and apply for the HUD funds. We haven't done that yet. HUD released it to us, actually, back in May and June of 2021, excuse me for that. We have $1.9 million. 15% of that is going to be for administration. So the interesting thing and the good thing that our HUD rep told me on the phone is, Shanette, if you all would at least apply for the funds, then you could go ahead and hire a consultant to do a study, so that your council can have all of the information before them to determine what is the option and how we would best use the funds. So if that was, if we were allowed to apply for funds, we would definitely come back to you at a later date, because that requires a notice in the newspaper, and it requires a public hearing before you all. But once HUD released those funds to us, we would go ahead and do an RFP for a consultant, hopefully have that RFP out and going by August of this year at the latest. And that would, the consultant would focus on literally a neighborhood-based, community input approach. Because what I know is, and what I've learned from our larger sister cities, and what has been preached to me over these meetings that I've had, is that you have to go to the community first. Before anybody makes any decisions, go to the community. And so what we would look at is, our department is very used to and comfortable talking to neighborhoods. We would go neighborhood, a neighborhood approach, just like our best neighborhoods uses. We would work closely with them to talk to all of our neighborhood groups, both voluntary and those that are just mandatory HOA groups. We would also look at going to places like the Senior Center, where we can get people and have their opinion and their input. It's through looking at their input and looking at the data that a consultant would come up with a homeless strategy plan to bring back to you all, which hopefully would be implemented, and it's in that implementation by, at the latest, March of 2023, that it would determine, and you all make that decision on how to best use these funds. We have until 2030 to use these funds, but the one thing that our HUD rep told me on the phone a couple of weeks ago is, don't wait till 2030. Go ahead and at least take the time, excuse me, to figure out how you all want to do this, what's the best approach. That's what I'm hoping you all will allow us to do tonight, and I am available for questions.
Shanette, one of the comments you made early in on this was the aspect of the outreach that happens twice a week. I know that we've had a lot of comments from the community about visitors, and you mentioned that twice a week, we go out, morning, evening, sometimes on Saturdays, to make contact with folks that may need assistance. And we offer that assistance, including the wonderful map that you have that's been sent out to everybody that has resources available. And so those folks that come into this community that are out and maybe needing assistance have that opportunity to receive assistance, and that is a true and correct statement.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Q?
So I have a couple of questions. Obviously, it's great to have HUD funds, because, and it's not coming out from our pockets, it's coming from, you know, the HUD administration. But are there any strings attached? And are there any restrictions that is placed on the city when we're tapping into federal funds? That's the first question. And the second question is, are there any other cities who currently are in the same boat, I guess, as we are, and who either decide to go forward, and those who decide not to go forward, and their rationale behind that?
Okay. The first question, with regards to any kind of strings attached, they're no different than using our regular US Department of Housing and Urban Development funding, which means we tell them, this is how we're going to use the money. We have to use it in accordance with what they said in their guidelines. So for instance, those four things that I mentioned- So for instance, those four things that I mentioned, those allowable activities, that's it. We can't do anything else. The administrative fee being at 15%, we can't go over that. Those are things that, that would cause us to have to give HUD funds back, which that's just not what we do here at the city of Plano. But that's the, those are the strings that are attached. Nothing else other than what's in the regulatory documentation. Because we already use homeless management information system. They would make us do that. That's a part of a HUD requirement if we're going to use these funds. Other than that, there's no strings. So with regards to the number of people or municipalities that are using these funds and have set a plan, very few. So I was worried that Plano was really behind, and hence the call to the HUD rep. And we're not that behind. He said across the country, there had been five that had actually prepared the plan and are actually using the funds actively right now. So it's not bad that we're, we're not on the tail end, is what I'm telling you. He said what's happening and what they're seeing right now is cities and municipalities, if they haven't already done it, they are applying for the funds. And his concern to, or his question to me was, why again haven't you all at least submitted application? Because you can't go further and even think about it if you don't at least ask us for the money. The way it happens is they will, we apply for the funds in the same manner we would do CDBG and Home. They release them to us, and then we can actually start planning. Of that 15%, we can use about $100,000 of it upfront for a consultant without ever having a project set aside.
So are you saying that if we, we can start the application process and plan for strategically how to use the fund money and submit that? But ultimately, it is our choice whether or not we want to use that fund, even if it's approved?
So I should clarify that. Thank you for that question. That's a good question. Once we apply for the funds and we actually go into a situation where we have a consultant and the consultant has made a plan, we then need to use the money. And it, it doesn't matter how. I mean, if you all said you wanted to do tenant-based rental assistance and run a rental assistance program in the, in the way that we do right now, we would still have to use it. If we don't use it, let's say we told HUD, okay, we did a plan and we don't want to use these funds for homelessness prevention, for tenant-based rental assistance, for anything, then HUD would say they want all the money back that we've used on that consultant. But there's enough broad options, two of which we're already doing, that I, I don't foresee you all doing that.
Thank you. Councilmember Rick Adeli?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you for that presentation, Shanette. I was just wondering, on two of the options, I think, I think they were options one and options three, for the non-congregate shelter, do we have an idea how many individuals we would be able to serve? And conversely, for the affordable housing, how many units that would translate into?
So we discussed that in the, in the shelter meeting. As far as affordable, on the affordable side, they said no more than 150, and that might be too many units. So we're not talking about a lot because our numbers aren't big. We don't need something that is, is big. That's not what our numbers say. And remind, I want to remind you, these are for residents of Plano. So if, and we, we have a way in our, in our department of documenting, are you truly Plano's homeless? Because if you're not, you wouldn't be able to come to this shelter. And that is something that is acceptable, that HUD would allow us to do and to limit. On the non-congregate side, this is why they said that needs to be a county-led initiative. Because they said we don't have a good number on the amount of homeless in the county. I mean, Plano is just that point in time. But they said the countywide, when you think about some of the other areas around Lake Levon, who don't have a municipality or a county that is out there doing at least the annual pit, it's too hard for, to, to make a number up. So, so I, I.
Well, thank you for that information, Shanette. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Grady?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick points, because I did read the study and I, and I understand. There are a couple of thoughts that I have, and it seems to be, I guess, reversed. In all of the homeless material that I have read, the first thing that we need to take care of is the emergency needs first, which would cause for, call for an emergency sheltering of some sort. And then they move from there into a transitional housing and then into permanent housing or affordable housing, depending upon how you want to define it. So by saying that we're, we're looking at doing affordable housing, and I do understand what they're saying as, as far as it needs to be a county initiative, it doesn't seem to me to really solve the issue that we're trying to deal with, which is people that are homeless and need immediate assistance and wraparound services. So by not having or not at least working with the county in all of the municipalities within the county to have an emergency shelter, I think all we're doing is saying we're going to be having an affordable housing, but we're still going to have homeless on the street because we don't have any emergency shelter and we don't have a day center for them. So that, that to me is one of the issues. The other issue is dealing with the ongoing operational costs, which I certainly understand affordable housing has. I really think that there's two elements that we, we need to have. First, we need a, a local nonprofit that's major enough that can handle the operations of this thing on a long-term basis. But it also needs to be, from what I would call a public partner, a public-private partnership. So we have a P3 that's involved in it over a long period of time, and there's buy-in that it will happen over a long period of time. Because if we don't have that, I don't think we'll have the resources over a long period of time. And then at that point in time, it will begin to fail. So I think it needs to have a P3 element involved in it somewhere.
You are correct, and I, I agree with that. I, you know, I think I realized how fast I was talking to you all. So there is a place in this option of affordable housing units for a triage, just for the situation that you're talking about. But it is a place for people to come while they are holding on their room placement, while they're there, for, for those that are Plano residents to come. When you look at the transition that you talk about, and we're always talking about a housing-first approach. So you want to house them first, then you can give them the intense case management that's needed. The concern that our domestic violence shelters have, and even, even Samarina was on the call, so that's our transitional in McKinney, is that once they transition out of transitional, what happens? So they thought this one would be best because it solves that problem, and they said it would definitely need to have the triage area. Now, a day resource center, that is a, that is another topic that these funds cannot be spent on. However, the Collin County Homeless Coalition, I know you, the C1 plan talked about a day resource center. I'm not sure where the coalition is on that. However, that is something that could be a topic, just not for these funds. Okay? Did I answer everything?
No, we're good. We're good. I just wanted to bring that up as topics to think about as we're beginning to design this because I worry about the lack of wraparound services. In essence, you bring somebody in, you put them in a house, but you don't do anything with them. At that point in time, they fail because they still don't have a job. They still have mental or physical issues that are dealing with. They still have food insecurity, et cetera.
Guys, we're going to cut this off real quick, and if you have further questions, we're going to bring them to, to Mark, and we're going to take a short, short break, and we'll come back. All right? Thank you, Shanette.
Does this mean we can apply for the funds? Okay, thank you.
Counsel, can I just get a head nod around the dais as far as the ability to apply and then work on the plan? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. We will take. We're going to return at seven o'clock.
I now declare that the Plano City Council is reconvened into open session and that all members are present. Our mayor is joining us via Zoom. We will begin tonight's regular meeting with invocation led by Senior Pastor Randall Worley with Prairie Creek Baptist Church and the Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge led by Girl Scout Troop 6589 with Shepherd Elementary, Wilson Middle School, and Plano Senior High.
Our God and Father, we come before you humbly to seek your face. We recognize that we live in troubling times. In addition to the normal hatreds and greed of any other time, our whole world has been shaken by a pandemic that has rocked economies and patterns of living. Throw into the mix militant aggression by one of the most heavily fortified nuclear nations on earth, and problems like inflation seem petty in the bigger picture. I'm reminded of King Jehoshaphat of Judah, who faced the coalition of neighboring nations with a vast army come to invade. He prayed to you, God, and after reviewing his situation, he concluded with these words: "We do not know what to do, but our eyes are on you." I've been asked to offer an invocation for the Plano City Council today. I can't begin to imagine the matters they must decide on, the many lives they know will be affected for good or ill by every decision they make. I ask you, Lord, to grant our city leaders wisdom as they face challenging problems and decisions. I pray you grant them grace and kindness. May every choice they make be for the good, not merely for expediency or advantage. You know better than any the hurts and sorrows of every person in this city. Use this city council to alleviate suffering, to bring comfort where it is needed, to encourage us all as a city to pursue things that pertain to virtue rather than selfish concerns. I thank you, God, that you have brought such a diverse population to this city. I pray for the miracle of love that breaks down barriers of separation. I pray for a city that celebrates the many ways in which we are different and sees this as a strength, as a broader spectrum necessary to reflect the fullness of what your own goodness looks like. Grant us the joy of recovering our commonality, hearts that see every person around us as a brother or sister in the great human family. Finally, God, we recognize that we need you. We did not create ourselves. Everything we have, from our hands and feet to the air in our lungs and every breath we take, is a gift from you. We were created by you and for you. I pray for this city, that you, Lord Jesus, will draw all people to yourself and grant them the grace of new life in you. We entrust the decisions and discussions of this evening to you and humbly pray for your guidance for the good of all who live in and visit our city of Plano. We love you, Lord Jesus Christ, and it is in your name that we pray. Amen.
Please join us in signing the pledge.
(Inaudible)
Thank you Pastor Worley for your invocation and to Troop 6589 for leading the pledge. Tonight we get to recognize... Now, can you hear me? Perfect. Okay. Tonight we get to recognize our Plano Public Library for receiving the 2021 Achievement of Library Excellence Award from the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association. And I have Libby Holtman here, Director of Plano Public Library, and then several of our library team. Only 59 out of 565 public libraries in Texas achieved this award in 2021. To receive the award, libraries must exhibit excellence in the following 10 areas: reaching underserved and special populations, enhancing service levels, marketing programs and services in innovative ways, promoting cultural, topical, and educational programming, providing literacy support, offering a summer reading program, pursuing collaborative efforts, strengthening workforce development, addressing digital inclusion, and comprehensively training staff. This award reflects the commitment to excellence that Plano Public Library demonstrates to the community and people we serve every day. Congratulations. And I just wanted, Libby, to tell you a little bit about the libraries and some of the great work that's going on for our library right now.
First, I just want to say I was a former Shepherd Patriot and a Wilson Rand, so well done, y'all. We're just proud to serve our community. Each and every day, we have five community libraries across our city. These are some of our managers that work in those facilities. And we have some exciting projects coming up this year. We have the Davis Bond Project that was voted on in 2017. We hope by mid-May it'll be completed and that facility will open again. So, we hope you'll all join us there, wait for the invitation. And then we also have the Harrington Public Library, which is also under construction. It's still open with limited service, and we hope that'll be done at the end of this year, early next year. So, many exciting projects are coming about. We have summer learning and all sorts of activities for the whole family.
Comments of public interest. This portion of the meeting is to allow up to three minutes per speaker with 30 total minutes on items of interest or concern and not on items that are on the current agenda. The council may not discuss these items, but may respond with factual or policy information. The council may choose to place the item on a future agenda. And I do have a few speakers this evening. The first one is Jeff Barlett.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jeff Barlett, and I reside over in Haltem City, Texas. I decided to come out here to Plano to speak before the city council because I kind of have some concerns about last meeting, about some things that were going on. And before I say anything, I'd like to say is I strongly support the First Amendment. I'm not trying to attack the First Amendment in any way. I personally go to my council meetings all the time and speak up my concerns, and I encourage people to do so, even if it's controversial at times. I do that all the time. I speak my opinion at council meetings. But I'd like to take this time to address some of my concerns and also kind of educate people on what these meetings are supposed to be about. Some concerns I have is, I mean, some citizens were using council meeting time to support violence, to call out violence against a foreign leader, and I don't think that's appropriate to be doing at these meetings. I don't think we should be calling for violence anywhere. It's not something we should be doing. We should be supporting peace. I don't think we should be supporting war mongering propaganda in these council meetings. I also don't think it's appropriate to encourage drug use or anything like that, or encourage racism in our council meetings. And I kind of find a lot of these comments from last meeting a bit disturbing. Now, I'd like to say that these council meetings are for people to express their concerns and requests to these city council chambers. I mean, it's supposed to be for city-related business. Like, let's say there's potholes in the road, maybe someone has a concern, they bring it up to the council. That's what council meetings should be for. And usually, it's best if you keep these council meetings nonpartisan and just focus on city things. And I'd like to thank the city council for letting me speak before you. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Leah Thomas. Leah Thomas. Alexandria Stein.
Hello, how are you guys doing, council? So, my name's Alexandria Stein, and I'm here today to call out transphobia here in Plano. I am currently being restricted from swimming in the City of Plano Swim League against the women, even though it's clear that I reassigned my gender last week. Like, for example, do I look like a man? Obviously, not. This is a woman. But they're not going to let me swim and compete against the ladies because of transphobia. So, what I need you guys to do is I need you to wake up. We have champions like Leah Thomas. She's an NCAA champion, the best swimmer in college today. I can't get a scholarship unless I'm able to send a recruiting tape to these colleges. So, they say, "Oh, oh, you have an unfair advantage, Alexandria." What, what looks like, does this look like an unfair advantage to y'all? Does this look like an unfair advantage? There's nothing unfair about this. I mean, look at me. I'm freaking, I'm the same as a girl. But yet, you guys are going to let transphobia run rampant. Paige, I'm so worried. You're the city attorney. You really got to stand up and do something because, you know, that is gender bias, and I don't like gender bias. I'm on hormone therapy, so my estrogen levels are so high, they're through the roof. But you guys are going to sit here, and you're not going to take me seriously, you're going to laugh at me? I'm trying to compete. And yes, I was born a boy. So what, guys? This is 2022. It doesn't matter what you're born. We have Kintaji Brown Jackson even says, "She doesn't even know what a woman is." So then, I'm a woman. So that's what you guys have to do. If the Supreme Court justice is on my side, then why can't I get the same from the Plano City Council? That's the problem, is I come here and I'm still a victim of transphobia. Yet, we have champions like my girl Leah, my sister, and she is, she gets to win, but I don't. Why not? That's what I'm asking you. Why not? Why can't I swim against the ladies? Why are we having a transphobic world where I just want to compete against the ladies? Why are you saying that I'm not a biological woman? Clearly, I look like a biological woman. I mean, come on, it's been hours tucking this thing in. Give me a break. I should be able to swim. And I'm on so much hormone therapy, I don't even know left or right anymore. So, I'm doing this, I don't have an unfair advantage? No way! So, I need you guys to stand up. We have a city issue, Rick, and we can actually fix this and let me compete against the ladies. I'm sick of these women. "Oh, you're, you're having unfair advantage." Yeah, right! And I'm mentally ill, and they won't even let me compete in the Special Olympics. So, go figure. Think about that. I can't compete in the Special Olympics, and I can't compete against women. What kind of bigotry is that? Are you guys going to let that stand? I wouldn't let that stand. If I were y'all, I would stand up for me, because in the future, they're going to write these in the history books, and you're going to have to decide, decide what side Plano is on. Were they transphobes, or were they transpositive? And obviously, I'm transpositive. So, that's what I want. I want you guys to wake up to what's going on in the world and tell the City of Plano Swim League to let me compete against the ladies. I've been on hormone blockers for nearly two weeks now, and like I said, I'm so messed up from them, I'm probably going to lose anyway. But, I can send that tape to a college, and I might get a scholarship, Julie. So, don't look at me with your eyes looking at me all mean. I'm out here trying to change for you. This is women's rights. I'm standing up for women's rights. Thank you. It's Primetime Stein on Instagram, if you guys want to learn how to swim against the ladies. Thank you all so much.
The City of Plano and this council take the opportunity to hear from our citizens very seriously. We always welcome feedback on how we can make our community better. We take seriously our role as the city government and the importance of respecting our citizens' time and taxpayer resources. We strive to conduct ourselves with excellence and focus our agenda on city business, and in return, we ask that those that come before us provide that same level of respect. Next speaker, please. James Lockridge.
Hello, city council. How are y'all? Guys, I didn't come to the last city meeting because I was trying to give the City of Plano an opportunity to do some research and get back to me. That didn't happen. Now, guys, I told y'all the reason why I'm here, and I'm fighting for agricultural rights. Now, the City of Plano has not done anything yet. They come with me with this bogus thing, they're going to do this, this, and this. It didn't happen. The city has got to understand that the state laws in the state of Texas oversee the city. And when you're, when you literally let your city code compliance officers go rogue and go prejudiced against people, it's got to come to a screeching halt. When you're, whenever, they're mowing crops that literally, I have a video, they mowed a hay crop that was five inches tall, five inches. I mean, that's ridiculous. Send me a bill. No joke. I have it right here. Seven hundred and four dollars to mow my field, my crop. I just paid a bill today of six hundred and sixty-nine dollars that they sent me a bill on. I don't have a chance to dispute it. I don't have a chance to fight it. I've asked Jack Carr to do something. Stop the harassment from your code compliance officers. You're breaking a state law. Not only do I have that, but right here, I have a letter from the House of Representatives, many of them, that says that I am under siege. Every farmer and rancher is under siege by numerous cities in the metroplex, by your bogus laws, your bogus code compliance laws. Now, you ask us to mow our right-ofways. They're not our right-ofways. We're not allowed to do anything in them. We're not allowed to do one single thing on the edge of the curb. Why should we mow the city's right-ofways? Mow your own right-ofways. Look it up, guys. You collect city taxes to maintain the city's easements and right-ofways. TXU maintains theirs. TechStop maintains theirs. Atmos Gas maintains theirs. What is the difference between the cities maintaining theirs? You're the city attorney. Have you done anything to look up the agricultural state laws? Because you haven't reached back out to me, not one time. Jack Carr asked me to give him a list of just my ag properties in the City of Plano and not to talk to anybody else, because the deal that I'm getting doesn't go for everybody else unless they come forward. That's not how it works, guys. What's good for one is good for all. If you're breaking state laws and you've got two code compliance officers going prejudiced on people, you need to put a stop to it. Scott LaSueur and Christopher Smith both need to be fired immediately for harassment on farmers and ranchers. It's ridiculous that you mow my hay crop when it's five inches tall, and I will show anybody that calls me the video. I will show them the field right next door to me that has not been mowed, and I have a video of it every single month. It has not been mowed. Don't lie to me. Okay? Videos don't lie. Please, someone from city council or mayor, get in touch with me, and let's resolve the problem. It's that simple. I will be here every time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Lockridge. Next speaker, please. Marty Epstein.
Okay, hold on, one second. I'm just getting everything ready. Sorry, just got off work at Starbucks. Do you mind if I take this off? Okay. Oh, my gosh. Okay, so anyways, I'm ready. A little bit about me. My name is Marty Epstein. I'm an editor for BuzzFeed. I also work part-time at my local Starbucks as a barista due to the fact that they are paying for my 14-year-old openly gay transgender offspring's transition surgery, but I also enjoy the free pumpkin spice lattes. They are super yummy. I am also a former writer for the New York Times. I have a college education from the University of Oregon, where I majored in gender studies. I am offended that our children are not receiving affordable gender reassignment surgery along with hormone blockers and access to abortions. This alone is a threat to our democracy, as Justin Trudeau only says. It just shows that you people do not care about our children, and that these, these are the same people who refuse to obey the science and get fully vaccinated. It's science, people. Science! Science! And you are selfish murderers. I could die. Don't you people care about my life, you racist, insensitive, homophobic pigs? My 14-year-old openly gay sibling's transgender offspring also has two daddies who love their offspring so much, and CPS is working overtime to take their child away. However, my biggest concern is that my sibling's offspring isn't allowed to play in the eight-year-old girls' basketball league at the YMCA. This alone is showcasing the worst form of transphobia and is a threat to our democracy. My sibling's transgender offspring feels like an eight-year-old girl. Therefore, they should be able to play in the eight-year-old girls' league. Imagine living in a world where a little transgender offspring isn't allowed to follow their dreams because of transphobic Trump supporters and science deniers and conspiracy I still have nightmares every single night because of the hateful things that Donald Trump said on Twitter. I praised Joe Biden for having the courage and decency to stand up and say that poor kids are just as bright as white kids in this previous election, decent as he was on the ballot. And that's what I voted for, not this racist dictator, Donald Trump, the orange man. Transphobia is a spectrum, and it can go from, hold on. Transphobia is a spectrum, a spectrum.
Your time is up.
There are many shades of it. We have the extreme.
Your time is up. No, your time is up. Thank you. I'll just reiterate that we strive to conduct ourselves with excellence and focus our agenda on city business, and in return, we ask that those that come before us provide the same level of respect. Thank you. Next speaker.
That was the last one?
Thank you. Okay, we are now going to move back to the preliminary agenda, and we're going to finish our discussion on the homeless update. our discussion on the homeless update. We had a few council members that had a few questions and comments, so we're going to start with Councilmember Williams and Shanette Eden. You're up, Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Shanette, and thank you, Mayor Protem. I had a couple of questions based on our discussion about the homeless update. The first was, one of the permissible things for the ARP funding was support services such as preventative or homelessness prevention as well as housing counseling, but I didn't see that amongst the topics discussed at the meeting. Is there a reason why?
The reason that homelessness prevention, we already have a homelessness prevention program. So with the funds, the homeless shelter providers have been coming at Collin County Homeless Coalition as well as to city staff with regards to what are we going to do to house homeless? Because our rapid rehousing program runs out and ends up having a waitlist. And so they were looking for options. So that option of homelessness prevention was not discussed with them, but it definitely will be looked into like any other available option when we can get a consultant to go through it. Because that's something that we're used to doing here in Plano. We've had a homelessness prevention program, we have one now, and that does help people stay in their home.
Okay, and the prevention is something I, I would support as an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. The second question was, in the community circle, when I had looked at this, that looked appealing to me and it said it wouldn't require ARP funds, however, later on, it said it wasn't a good option and if I inferred the bulleted point correctly, it was because of a lack of funding. So if it's, first, did I infer that correctly? Was it considered not to be a good option because of lack of funding?
Yes, because the agency said that we can't pull resources that are already stretched from an existing program to come and in essence, have another program to assist people. They don't have the capacity to do it, both funding-wise as well as staff.
Okay, then, follow-up question worth 50 points. If the, if it doesn't require ARP funding, but it's not a good option because it would pull resources away, could we use ARP funding toward it to alleviate those concerns about pulling resources away? Because when I looked at the description of the community circle, it looked good to me. It looked like something we would want to pursue.
Getting back to you. So we could fund support services, including housing counseling and homelessness prevention. You can't outright just pay for case management with home ARP funds. So home funds in general, home funds in general that the city uses have to be towards something that affects somebody getting a home or staying in a home. And so the way that the regulations are written, case management without that home part is not an allowable home expense. So the ARP comes from the American Recovery Plan Act Part, but it still is a home-funded activity, which means it has to produce some type of housing activity in the end.
Okay, then do I understand correctly that not only does it not, the community circle not require ARP funds, but ARP funds can't actually be used for it?
Correct.
Okay. In understanding that it has to have some home component to it to be eligible for ARP funds, did you, or is it possible to combine the community circle with one of the other options in order to make it eligible? Because it seems like a really good support option.
Yep. So the way we'll look at it now is, I'm glad that you all are going to allow us to apply for the funds because all those options are things that a consultant can go ahead and take a look at, more so and with more experience than, than I just have, just talking in the agencies as well, and look at the data to support it.
Okay, and thank you. And my final question was, for the option to convert to affordable housing units, the, the first two bullets are, creates housing for homeless individuals and families, and second, allows for the creation of rental history. I would infer that, I did infer that, to mean that it would just provide free housing for homeless, but I'm not sure what rental history means there if it is indeed free. Does it just mean an established residence for a period of time or does it actually provide a rental history? And if so, what are the requirements for people to actually live in the subsidized units?
So right now, we have a rapid rehousing program. And the way that program works is we have homeless individuals that work with an agency to provide case management, all those other social services that are needed. But when they find the actual apartment that they're going to rent, the lease is in their name. And so with the lease being in their name, it allows them to build back rental history either that they once had, that has been lost, for lack of a better word, or that they didn't have, that they've never had. So it helps them when they transition out of our rapid rehousing program into their own program, their own, not program, but their own apartment where no one is there to help them because they, they're self-sufficient now. So sometimes, a barrier to getting an apartment is your past rental history. The same thing would apply here.
Okay, thank you very much, Shanette.
Councilmember Homer?
Yes, Councilmember Brady and I had the opportunity to go to the National League of Cities Conference in D.C. a couple of weeks ago and homelessness and affordable housing was a very, very hot topic for just about every city there. So I just wanted to take a moment to reiterate some of the things you've said and share just some of my notes so the council, my fellow council members can, can hear some of what we, what we heard, but they were talking about the $10 billion that went to HUD, half of which is for vouchers and the other half for House America initiatives. And like you said, let's get people in homes first, like that's the first, and I thought it, I thought it was interesting that there's a lot of barriers, like you were saying, to getting off your feet. If you don't have a, a home or roof over your head, you don't have anywhere to store your belongings. That's going to keep you from wanting to go find a job because you don't have, these are the only things you have. So giving someone a roof over their head and a place to keep their things safe or maybe keep a pet will help them to, you know, it may be just needing that stability for a month or two that will allow them to be in a place that are safe where they might say, you know, "I want to get clean now" or "I'm open to receiving some of these wraparound services." So, so that, they emphasize that, that that really, a lot of times, we say, "Well, let's get them clean, let's do the, all these things first," and really, getting them housed first is really important. And then they, they were encouraging, you know, they were encouraging all the cities to apply for this grant money, so thank you for, for your presentation and, and making sure that we make, we, we make that a priority. But they said we should strategically use funds, so use the maximum extent possible. Money can also be used for people who aren't homeless but are in danger of becoming homeless, as you said. Prioritize who gets help first, use deliberately to help those who disproportionately are hit with homelessness. Formalizing relationships with housing and healthcare partners, kind of what Shelby was just talking about. And they said we have, we have seven million units, that we're seven million units short on affordable housing in the United States right now, which is kind of eye-opening. And another thing I thought was interesting was, like you said, we have vouchers, but we're having trouble finding landlords and, that will accept those vouchers. And they said that, that they're, they're pushing landlord engagement and ways that maybe we can find more landlords that will participate. They also said you can ask HUD for approval to pay 120% of fair market to offer more housing options, which I thought was interesting. So, let's see, the other thing they said is a lot of those shelters, the reason, because the question was asked, what do you do with people who don't seek help, that they, for whatever reason? And they said, "We have to look at, what are the reasons that they don't seek help or don't seek shelter?" And I've found out, a lot of the times, it's just all the rules. You know, you can only bring two bags with you, or you can't bring your pet with you, or you have to be in by this time and out by this time. And so maybe reevaluating as we're looking at some solutions, what, what really are the rules that we need and that we don't need. And then the last one point that I thought was really interesting was looking at our criminal and court systems. Are we actually doing outtakes and interviewing with our inmates when they're released to make sure that they have a place to go? And we're finding a lot of times, that's where our homeless population's coming from. So I just wanted to take time to share with you all some of the notes that I took during the session, it was very interesting. Thank you, Shanette.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, ma'am. Shanette, one thing I want to start off with, I forget about it here, i- is the little pamphlet you have, i- is great, I, I haven't seen that, but one thing I was going to ask you and also include that was, we used to have these little packets that you had that had homeless resources and everything else that, that I used to have and I'll, as I encounter, I'll do, I will hand it out. Could you get more of those for us to, to DeeDee or someone so she can get them out to us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, good. That was the easy part, thanks. Councilman Williams and Homer really touched on a lot of what, what I wanted to touch on, but, but I just, I, I guess I want to emphasize and maybe see if there's a way to work this in, you know, to this new, new funding program is homeless prevention is, is something I think we need to put more resources into. And, and we talked about one of the options, developing a, a rental history, you know, to help people and stay in, in their house, or to get into a rental environment. There's nothing that hurts you worse than getting booted out of a place for non, non-rent payment. So I think if, if we can somehow massage the funding through this grant, you know, and this may be one of the things that, that, you know, Maria had, had asked about strings attached. The string attached may be that we can't really use these funds for something that would better benefit our community, we have to only use it for something that the federal government thinks would benefit our community. And I think we, you, our group knows much more about what would benefit our community than the federal government knows. And I, and I think that's where I'd like to see some of the resources put, if there's any way that we can manipulate that, to use that to keep people in their homes so they have their pets, you know, their belongings and, and, and I think just, because I, you know, as you know, I've dealt with some people in this situation and, and to keep a better, just a, a sense of pride, you know, and dignity, that, that's what we need to be concentrating on.
Thank you. Councilmember two?
So I'm glad we came back to me, but I, I want to put a plug into the Collin County courthouse because in, in the criminal world, we, we have, or criminal world, in the, in the criminal defense, yes, the underground. Collin County has been very progressive in putting together the mental health program in, in the courthouse in dealing with those people who suffer from mental health issues. And as you know, a mental health problem is one of the prevailing reasons why many people are homeless and not seeking for shelter and not seeking for assistance. So I think that's another issue that I, I, I want to address the next time when you come around to see whether or not those funds can be somehow in our wraparound services, deal with the mental health issues. Because of, I, I think that's going to be the, the main problem that we have with homeless people because if people want a house and they go in, live it, the problem's solved. But what we have to deal with is those people who don't know that they need help and don't want to be helped and they're out on our streets because they just, you know, they, they don't know better. I mean, they, they're not on prescription, they, they don't understand what's going on. So that's the issue that I think I, I want to find out whether or not the, the HUD grant can provide some assistance, whether or not there is any strings attached to that, whether or not there's any restrictions, what type of programs we're going to have to work with. So for example, do we, can we work with LifePath, the, the ones that, that's in our, you know, in our community? Or do we have to use a specific program that's, you know, that's authorized by, you know, the, the federal government? These are the type of issues that I'm really interested in.
Thank you. All right, thank you, I think we're, I think we're done now. We've got everybody's comments in. All right, we'll move on to consent and regular agendas. Is there any council member that would like to remove an item from the agenda? All right. Any items for future discussion, future agendas?
Yes, Ms. Mayor Protem. I would like to ask that we do a review and an evaluation of the underlying rationale and policy with regard to public comments in our city council's regular meeting. I want to see whether or not the current policy is viable to our meetings and whether or not that policy and the purpose of that policy is currently being served. That's it.
Do you have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Great, thank you. Any other items to add? All right, so we will now move back to the regular agenda and go to consent agenda.
The consent agenda. The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from the agenda for individual discussion by a council member, the city manager, or any citizen. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Are you ready for us to vote? I don't see anything on there. Should we just vote anyway?
If you want to, you can.
Mayor, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, we can't see anything, so are you, are you okay? Okay, great, the vote was eight-zero. Thank you on the consent agenda. I guess you'll just have to tell me tonight. Yeah, I just can't see it, so you'll just have to let me know.
Okay. Public hearing items. Applicants are limited to 15 minutes presentation time with a five-minute rebuttal if needed. Remaining speakers are limited, limited to 30 total minutes of testimony time with three minutes assigned per speaker. The presiding officer may amend these times as deemed necessary. Non-public hearing items. The presiding officer will permit public comment for items on the agenda not posted for a public hearing. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests, length of the agenda, and to ensure meeting efficiency and may include a cumulative time limit. Speakers will be called in the order the requests are received until the cumulative time is exhausted. Item number one, public hearing in consideration of in ordinance as requested in zoning case 2021-30 to amend the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city, ordinance number 2015-5-2 as heretofore amended, granting specific use permit number 58 for trade school on .1 acre located 224 feet east of Coit Road and 325 feet north of Parker Road in the City of Plano, Collin County, Texas, presently zoned retail, directing to change accordingly in the official zoning map of the city, providing a penalty clause, a repealer clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, a publication clause, and an effective date.
Right. Hello again, Mayor Protem, mayor, council, and executives. This is a zoning case for your consideration this evening. So the first slide we have for your review is the location of the property. It is at the corner of Parker Road and Coit. So you can see it is part of a retail corner there on the northeast corner. It's approximately a 2,500 square foot lease space and you can see the notice boundaries on the exhibit. So the aerial shows the, again, a closer and aerial view of this request. It is within an existing retail building. There are commercial uses surrounding in each direction. So with regard to conformance to the comprehensive plan, this location is considered neighborhood corners. It's in the 2021 comprehensive plan under which this has been reviewed and the location is shown on the screen. This does show conformance with the comprehensive plan in that this area is already designated as an employment type and a retail, more specifically, type for employment use. So it is very small size, again, a tenth of an acre on a larger 1.5 acre of land that's classified as retail. So this makes effectively no change by granting this SUP to the land use mix in the comprehensive plan because it stays consistent from retail to retail. There's no change in the land use mix. So some other considerations, the parking required for this use is less than other similar uses that might be expected. The property does have adequate parking and it would be a complement to the existing shopping center, which includes a variety of non-residential uses. So we received no feedback on this item from the people within 200 feet, the property owners, or from the property itself. owners, or from the property itself. Then we did receive one response on the zoning case, and you can see the location on the screen that was for support. And with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission did also vote seven to zero for approval. The applicant does not have slides, and we just recently received an email that they have a health issue with their family and are unable to be here this evening. So I'm available to answer questions you might have.
Counsel, do you have questions for staff? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are there any speakers for this item?
There are no speakers on this item.
Oh. I will open the public, open the public hearing. Are there any speakers for this item?
There are no speakers on this item.
I will close the public hearing. And combine comments to counsel.
Motion to approve the item. Second.
Counsel, please vote. Mayor, how do you vote?
Yeah.
And that motion passes eight to zero. Item number two.
Item number two, fiscal year 2021-22 status report and three-year financial summary.
Good evening. Karen Rhodes, Budget Director. Tonight is the night that we kick off our next year's budget process for fiscal year We begin so tonight. We have included this document in your packet. It's our financial forecast for the next three years. We're presenting this. It's called a look ahead into the future. It's to identify our opportunities and challenges that we're going to experience the next three years. The forecast is a starting point for the 22-23 budget process. Every annual budget adopted by the city council is required to be balanced. Any deficits that you see within the document should be eliminated during the budget process. So we follow all the financial policies that we have here at the city. Once again, this has been our goals for the last three years. It's a budget for sustaining Plano's excellence. We look at our quality infrastructure, want to keep up with all our service demands. We also follow all our financial policies and want to maintain our AAA bond rating. We also want to keep our property taxes low for our citizens. And then we also want to look after our staff or our personnel that are carrying out the demands of the citizens. We have a couple of various challenges amongst us going forward. Us, like many other cities and many other, everybody, right now is experiencing supply chain issues. We definitely are having them in the vehicle department. We are on schedule to replace vehicles. We have a total timeline. In a couple of minutes, Mike Ellis and I are going to be discussing with y'all for fire trucks and solid waste trucks. It's taking anywhere between 28, 36 months in order to get a vehicle in. We definitely are on time parameters in order to get the vehicles in, and we're going to discuss those here in a minute. Rising fuel cost is hitting us. The majority of our vehicles here run on diesel fuel instead of regular unleaded, and I'm sure you've been to the gas pumps. It's all costing a lot more money. We're having construction delays also. Cost escalations are 30 to 50% on lumber, concrete, and other things that go into construction. We also are seeing inflationary pressures. Right now nationwide, inflation 7.9% included within our document. We are having inflation at 4% included on the expenditure side, but we have something planned in order to keep aside for big projects that run out of money. I'm going to go through that in here in a minute. In the document, the general fund is set at 30 days of working capital for this coming up year. You will see in the following two years, we do have a discrepancy. We have our revenues are not meeting our expenditures. This is just for the work that's going to be, need to be done over the next couple of years, and we'll get to that here in a minute. Also, we have included in here 15.7 million in ARPA funding that we received. We're supposed to be receiving a second tranche of money in June. It is not included in this document because we have not received it yet. This also includes a salary increase in, for our staff, of 3%. It's only included in 2223, not in the two other years. Also, our health insurance fund has taken a hit due to COVID. Over the last two years, we've lost $10 million in that fund balance. These are some of the issues that we're going to be discussing with counsel over the coming up months as we prepare the budget. It maintains the tax rate of 44.65 cents, which is currently what we have, however, and we started this in the last budget. The 2021 bond referendum overwhelmingly passed. It was $364 million. In order not to affect the tax rate, what we started doing this current year is .25 cents is going to be transferred from the general fund over to the debt fund in order to pay for the coming up debt that we have in order to implement those projects, and we'll get to that here in a minute. Our risk management fund, the general fund, is giving $5.8 million a year. We've had to increase that to 7 million. That's primarily due to the workers' comp payments that we're having to pay, also insurance costs, as many of us personally are experiencing, are also going up. Real quick, this is a look at the general fund. As I mentioned before, we're at 30 days for 2223. Hopefully, we're going to have 65 days of operations. That fund balance goes into 2223 and helps offset to keep that at 30 days, going out in 2324 and 2425. As I mentioned before, that is just the work that's going to be, need to be done over the next two years when we get past this budget. Some of the assumptions that we include within the forecast, we have two sets. We have population assumptions, and we get those from our planning department. Also, COG gives us our new numbers in April. But we have the populations currently at 289,600, going at .9%, 1.2%, and then .7% to a population of 297,600 in 2425. On the inflation side, as I mentioned a minute ago, included within our forecast for the next two years, we included 4% for the different funds as far as the expenditures go. Now, what we're also going to be doing is adding in an additional $1 million within our non-departmental budget to help offset any inflationary expenditures that our departments are going to have over this next year. We are not, we are kicking off the budget process with the departments on Wednesday, and we have not included any inflation in their targets. We run by a target-based budget, being that because we're going to keep this extra funding to the side for when these big projects go over. I talked about the 2021 bond program. We are issuing 79.2 million in GO debt in May. Coming up, our future issuance, 80.7 in 2023, 90 in '24, and then 80 in 2025. The whole forecast includes the issuing of those bond sales. We will be having another bond referendum in 2025. We have interest rates at 4% currently. I already talked about the fact that we are taking .25 cents of the general fund rate, transferring it over to the debt, and you'll see here, the debt rate increases. We're currently at 11.35 on the debt side. It goes up to 12.10 cents in 2425. Okay, let's talk about assessed property values. These numbers here were given to us by the Collin Central Appraisal District when we first talked to them. It was the first week in March, right? Or right then, they had an increase on the existing property side of 3.5%. The following year, 3%, and then 2%. We have new growth that's coming online, $625 million. They have a report showing us what's going to be coming online, and we are estimating $500 million for the following two years. So when you put all that together, we are going from $47.69 billion to $53.53 billion in 2425. One cent on the tax rate right now is $4.9 million. Now, they called us the other day. We're most likely going to be seeing anywhere the average home value going up 28 to 30% on the average home value. One of the things we want everybody to keep in mind, state law dictates you can't be, we can't go up more than 10%. It's called a homestead cap. So the average home value, really, the taxable part, cannot go up more than 10%. On their bill, they will have a line on there, and it says homestead cap, and I will bring back on one of our meetings what the actual bill would look like. We also offer a 20% homestead exemption. We also offer a $40,000 exemption for 65 and over, and of course, we have the tax freeze on the 65 and over in place. So when you go back in that 3.5%, you're probably thinking, well, is it not going to be going up 10%? Well, it's not going to be going up 10% on our role. The majority of our role now is commercial, commercial properties, okay? Residential's 47% and commercial's 53%. Anyway, this is what preliminarily they're telling us. They're supposed to be mailing out the letters April 15th. At the end of April, we will get our final certi, not final certified, but our preliminary certified values, and we will send out an email to all of y'all stating what the differences are and how they came in. Sales tax. Sales tax has really come back. I don't know if y'all have been to restaurants lately. They are totally packed. Right now, we operate under a three-year cap as far as what our sales tax projection is. For the next year and the following years, the three-year cap, if we end up getting what we think is going to be $100 million in sales tax this year, it will be $92.2 million, and it's included within the forecast. We do think our projection for 2122 is around $100 million. February alone came in at 7.7 million or an increase of a million. It equated to a 15.42% increase. For the first five months of this fiscal year, we're up nearly $6 million. We have remained conservative on our projection out to get to that $100 million, and we are saying we're going to get a 5% increase in each of the month. The actual for 2021 was 92.3 million. As you know, sales tax is always very volatile, bunch of things going on. We've got inflation going on, we've got state comptroller changes that are going to be coming up, the price of oil. Anyway, all of this does go into the sales tax. This is just a look at the three-year average versus the actual of what it came in. That difference there is when, when we get the actual sales tax that comes in, anything over what we have put in the budget can go towards one-time expenditures, capital maintenance fund, it could go into a reserve fund. Anyway, city council decides where it's going to go. Recently, or this last year, we were $3.5 million over, and y'all picked several different one-time projects for it to go to. This just shows the increases over the last year. We're expecting to be 9.1% over what we collected last year. And then this is just for y'all to know, each month, we have been seeing double-digit increases on our sales tax. Like I said, this last month, it was 15% over what we collected last year. Building and development-related revenue. If you go back to 1819, 1920, we saw dips. There was a bunch of projects that were put on hold because of the pandemic. All of a sudden, everything started opening up, and in September, we all of a sudden received all kinds of permit revenue because they had released the projects to get going. We're expecting 7 million for this year. Within the budget or the forecast, we've included $6.7 million. A couple of assumptions that are included within the forecast, like I mentioned before, we have a 3% across the board for civil service and non-civil service. That's totaled $6.8 million for all funds. Also, we've included the 2 cents of the tax rate to go to the Economic Development Incentive Fund. It's totaling 9.9 to 10.6 million dollars during the forecast. We have gone in and included our normal capital maintenance transfer of $35.3 million throughout the forecast, and then we have funding totaling $1.4 million for library books and digital CIP expenses coming online, these are presumed to be funded within the forecast for this coming up year. It's $1 million, going out to $1.4 million for the three years. Several of the projects that are included in that are the fire training center coming online. We have two expansions on fire stations, Fire Station 5 and Fire Station 8, and it includes a very big project at the Parkway Service Center. It's called Cosgrove Service Center now. Anyway, we have that coming online. Not included within this forecast are any program enhancements related to mandates, growth, increased services, technology requests, or any other items. All of those are reviewed during the actual budget process. We always send out in February to the departments, what are you thinking about as far as personnel, what you're going to ask for during the budget process? Right now, we're at 47 full-time positions totaling $4.7 million. The majority of this is 22 public safety officers that will be requested. 15 are firefighters for two new ambulance companies, and then we have two police officers that are going to be requested for mental health and homelessness. In addition, there's three that go to the CIP coming online, and then 12 other positions in other funds. Water and sewer fund, it's recovered from the pandemic. I don't know if y'all remember, the last two years, we really lost a lot of revenue on the sewer side because when the commercial properties closed down and all the schools, our sewer revenues just tanked. It's finally come back to pre-pandemic levels. We like to keep 60 days of working capital in here. It's at 53. Water and sewer. North Texas gave us some new information in February, so that is included within your document. This is based on the new water and sewer, water annual minimum demand of 26.6 billion gallons. Back in 2020, when the new wholesale water contract came in, they're going to be lowering our demand or our usage that we're paying for over the next eight years. Right now, it's at 26.6, down from 26.7. You'll see here that we have included a pass-through of all North Texas Municipal Water District increased contract costs, 7.36% coming up for this next year, followed by 4.98 and 5.34, that's for water. On the sewer and the Upper East Fork Interceptor, it's about 7% each year. We have a reserve fund that can be used to go against the rates of $5.8 million. We have included a capital maintenance fund transfer at $2 million. Okay, CIP projects. We have an awful lot of water and sewer CIP contracts. We have been on the pay-as-you-go system, meaning we cash fund our water and sewer CIP projects in less CIP projects unless we have really big projects coming online, and we go in and sell some short-term debt. The last several years, we have 12.5 million dollars that's being transferred from the water and sewer fund over to pay for our CIP projects. We have slowly been running out of money within the water and sewer CIP. This is a look at the water CIP. For 2022, 23, we have estimated we're going to have about 25 million dollars worth of projects. You will see it going into a red deficit, 15.9, and then it just gets bigger going on out. On the sewer side, 18 million dollars is going to be needed for projects over there. Once again, we're carrying a deficit in this fund. Over the next couple of months, during the budget process, we're going to come back with some different options that we can do because we just can't stop the water and sewer CIP portion. So anyway, we just wanted to give y'all a heads up, and this is a discussion for another day. Want to talk a little bit about the other funds. I'll go in convention and tourism and the rec revolving funds. They were really, really, they, they took big hits during the pandemic. They're starting to slowly come out. The municipal drainage fund is doing quite well. If you remember, we issued 40 million dollars. 30 of that was for the Collin Creek culvert. We had planned on a three-phase rate increase, do three different ones. We passed through two in 2020. We're not going to need that third one. So we got really good interest rates. The fund is doing quite well right now, so we're, we're good to go on there. Sustainability, environmental services, we had a rate increase of a dollar back in 2020. They're doing fine until you start off at 23, 24, and 24, 25. They do start running a deficit. The golf course fund, it was the pandemic sport. It's doing very well, and our capital maintenance fund has really been helped by the bond referendum that we had the other day. This is just a look at your convention and tourism. You'll see in the bright yellow, you can see how the revenues are starting to pick up. In fact, we received something today. I think they're at 74% occupancy rate with an average daily rate of $97. The civic center is starting to get booked here, so all that's going up, and they are starting to recover. The rec revolving fund really hit a, took a hit because we had to close the recreation centers. They are starting to come out of this, and hopefully in 2024, 25, we'll be back to nearly $4 million in collecting those fees. Our capital maintenance fund was helped. We removed some of the very, very big projects that we had been paying for in capital maintenance, and we put them on the bond referendum. And that has really helped this fund. We like to keep $20 million at the ending fund balance, and you'll see here, we are planning on doing that through 2425. Capital maintenance, our goal is to provide 75% of the annual depreciation into the fund. Right here, it's going to be 92%, or that's what we're projecting, is 92% this coming up year, and then going out staying around 70%. This is your budget calendar. We're going to be having several discussions as we're going forward, but on July 27th, the city manager will submit his recommended budget and CIP. At that time, copies are made at the, or made available on our internet site and to the libraries. August 8th, we will have a presentation regarding all the CIP. We're also going to have a public hearing on the operating budget and community investment program. You also will be set to approve the tax roll that comes in. The tax roll is due to us on July 25th. And then we will discuss the proposed tax rate that y'all are thinking you're going to be passing in September. Thursday, August 12th, we have a budget town hall meeting. Now, we do have a change here. We used to have, at the 1st of August, we had a whole work session that was devoted to all our grants, the arts grants, our social services grants, our historic preservation. The last couple of years, they've been so efficient, we're only here for like 15, 20 minutes. So we've moved those to the first part of the agenda, which will be on Saturday, August 11th, when you have your full-day budget work session. September 12th, you will have a public hearing on the tax rate. The council will then adopt the operating budget, CIP, and set the tax rate. And then October 1st, we begin again. Okay, let's talk about the supply chain issues, and I've got Mike Ellis here. Ordering a fire in environmental waste services vehicles. On the fire, what we would like to ask for tonight is the, we have three pumper trucks that are scheduled to be replaced in year 2425. It is taking so long to order and then to receive the vehicles. We are asking that we be able to submit a letter of intent to the maker that we're going to be definitely ordering these vehicles. We're also, not only that, if we give it to them by May 1st, we will save 7.25% per vehicle. They're having price escalations all the time. Let's talk about environmental waste. This is, this is a normal practice for us to go in and preorder the solid waste trucks, but normally, we're pre-ordering like August and September. The time delay is so long now, we want to go ahead and in May, order those. Now, one thing to keep in mind, you're not paying, you're not funding any of this. You're not writing out a check. The check does not get written till we actually receive the vehicles. Also, during the budget discussion, this is not for tonight, but the budget discussion, we're going to be discussing leasing some vehicles in our fleet versus purchasing them because it's taking so long. Anyway, like I mentioned, we'll have savings if we order by May 1st. What questions do you have on this? Because I do have Mike Ellis. He is our manager over equipment services.
Anybody have questions on the vehicles?
No, I think it makes perfect sense.
I think we're good to move forward on that.
Good. Okay, and that's all I have for you tonight. Any questions for me?
Any questions on the, for Karen?
Thank you.
Congressman Williams, uh, Congressman. I just gave you a huge promotion.
Jumping the gun, aren't you?
Sorry.
Good luck with that.
Not yet, not yet. Councilwoman Williams. Prediction of the future.
Right, right. Thank you, Karen. Because of our, our increasing expenses mitigated a little bit by increasing, expected increase in sales tax revenue, but also because of the bonds that we've been issuing, our debt service is increasing based on the documents I looked at by about $1 million a year. What is our actual current debt balance with everything we've issued to date?
Well, I'll send y'all that in an email tomorrow because I don't have that off the top of my head, but what I remember, it's about $340 million. But I will send it to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
It's actually written, written in the budget book, which I don't have here. But we have to, now on the front cover, you have to state what your outstanding debt is. I will tell you this, we're, we've got one of the lowest outstanding debt per citizens around, so we're doing good.
Thank you, Karen. Back to you, Governor Prince.
I'm, I'm going to jump in real quick before we get any further on the title changes. Mayor and council, one of the things that I wanted to mention is we have an upcoming retreat, I believe it's April 28th. We will discuss at that time any council priorities that we want to make sure that are included in the budget. But we know it's a, a challenging year for our citizens with inflation and with some of those costs, which is why we, we're making sure everybody understood the caps on what the, the taxable value will be, as well as our exemptions of homestead, senior exemptions, things of that nature. But we are not immune from those same increases, and I think that's a really important story that Karen was sharing there with regard to fuel and inflation. But we are doing what we can with regard to, to locking in prices and trying to, to move ahead on some of these, considering other options of leases versus purchases. But this is the beginning of the process. And so Karen and I will be spending a lot of time over the next couple of months, talking with departments, talking with council, and making sure that we put together the best possible overall value for our budget that we can, as we've done the last several years.
Thank you very much, Karen.
Item number three, stream bank stabilization project presentation.
All right. Good evening. My name is Caleb Thornhill, Director of Engineering. Tonight, I have with me Allison Smith, who is an engineer senior in our CIP, or Community Investment Program Division, and Russell Erskine, who is in our Development Division. They both have a, an extensive drainage background and assist and lead really the stream bank stabilization program. So tonight, I wanted to talk about it, and at the end of it, I'll be asking from some direction on our current policy for the program. All right, so the program itself, obviously, Russell, Allison, and I have not been here since Plano started, but from what we have been able to find, the program was initiated somewhere in the late 80s and early 90s, is when we started getting customer or citizen concerns about erosion. And at some point in the early 90s, a criteria was developed to evaluate certain properties. In the late 90s, we collaborated with three cities, Allen, McKinney, and Garland, to develop a stream bank stabilization manual, which would give us and also developers, engineers, guidance on proper stabilization techniques within the city. And really, the purpose of that is to reduce potential damage to public and private property and the environment itself. So Allison and Russell are very familiar with this. This is an example of the ranking evaluation sheet that we use when we evaluate. And so from a procedure or process standpoint, right now, we will get a call or an email or fix it from a citizen that has concerns about erosion. It may be a fence that's leaning, it may be just a steep bank, whatever the issue may be. Allison and Russell will take several steps, contact the owner. One of those is they'll, they'll investigate the plat language, and the plat language will indicate who's responsible for the maintenance of that creek. They'll do an evaluation whether that erosion is outside of the existing drainage easement. They'll also evaluate the physical characteristics, how tall is the stream bank, you know, what's the height of the bank? They'll investigate if there's any major structures involved, obviously, a residence, a road, a bridge, anything along those lines, any major utilities in the area. They'll go through this checklist that you see here on the right, and they'll assign a score to that. And then based on that score, they will put that on a evaluation summary, and then they'll actually give that information back to the citizens. Now, that score will go into, we've got a database that we keep. That score will actually, it's not a first come, first served. That score is the highest. So the highest projects or the highest ranking are the projects that we will then initiate into a CIP project. But it's key, and we'll talk more about this, and I know there's several speakers here tonight, the plat language will really dictate that first step for us and whether we actually put this on the CIP project. So regardless of the score, that plat language really is the first step for us. The funding for it, it comes from the, the Municipal Drainage System Fund. This should look familiar. We just updated this back in 2020 for the Collin Creek culverts. That's a major portion of this. But right now, we're projecting, working with Budget and Karen, and I know she's already left, but somewhere around $10.3 million per year from that fund, and that fund will fund this program. From a breakdown standpoint, here is the major components of that fund. Collin Creek, as I mentioned, that's $2.4 million per year. If you'll remember, the project bid around $23 million for the entire project, but right now, we're, we have 2.4 million per year, and all of these numbers on a per-year basis. So the salary is for staff. Public Works has, I think it was around 20 staff. Environmental Health, Planning, Engineering has staff dedicated to drainage, again, Russell and Allison. Parks spends about $2 million a year, and that's to stabilize their channels, their creeks throughout their property. Engineering uses 1.3 million, and that's for different types of drainage projects. That usually is some type of maintenance of an existing infrastructure. So whether it's an existing head wall, a pipe that's collapsed, a pipe that needs to be upsized, a closed system, we'll use for those types of projects. Other is, you know, any type of equipment that we need, trucks for public works, anything along those lines that they would need to do maintenance needs related to drainage, related to creeks, that we have the responsibility. And then the stream bank stabilization, we dedicate $500,000 a year to that, so it's about 5% of that total $10 million. So for an example, I'm sure the picture on the right, you guys have probably all seen at one point somewhere in the city, this is a gabion wall. The baskets are, you know, it's, it's a wire mesh, whatever you want to call it, that has rocks inside of it. It's one of our best performers. Citizens seem to like it. It's got a more natural look than just a concrete wall in a channel or what you may see on the side of a tech stock construction road where there's a shot creek up against holding the bank. This is, you know, again, it has a very good lifespan, a good performance. This is a project we did recently at Prairie Creek in Independence. A couple more projects. This is Rockbook Drive, again, the gabion structure, a gabion wall. And the last one, Briar Creek. You can see from a, a scale perspective, the gentleman there in the green assuming he's somewhere between five and six feet tall. That wall is upwards of 15, 18 feet tall at this location. So I've talked about the responsibilities a little bit, and this is really a breakdown of the responsibilities throughout the city of Plano. So Plano has somewhere around 140 miles of stream, creek, channel throughout the city. 52 of that is city responsibility, and by that, I mean on the plat for that parcel, whether it's city-owned or if it is, it does not assign any responsibility. The city has taken ownership or responsibility for the maintenance of those streams. The non-residential commercial is 54 miles, where it clearly states on the plat that it's a commercial property or a non-residential property, and they are responsible for that. City Parks is about 21.3 miles. HOA individual, which we'll talk a little bit more, approximately 8.6 miles. The 2.8, that's the very few remaining areas where it's undeveloped, unplatted ag properties in the city. So what we have seen, and Allison and Russell can attest to this, is our responses or concerns from citizen has risen in recent years. We normally are around 25 to 30 visits per year. In 2021, we had 54 visits, so, you know, one a week essentially. Now, that's a 50% increase since 2018. Out of those visits, when we go and look at the plat, 75% is city responsibility and 25% is either an HOA or an individual property owner. Each of those site visits take our staff anywhere from 12 to 20 hours, depending on the complexity, depending on the magnitude. They will go out, do the evaluation, they'll fill out that form, they'll send correspondence and a letter back to the citizens. Obviously, some of these are massive. It's, it may be one property owner that brings the concern to us, but they may investigate, you know, several thousand feet in either direction, just depending on the conditions out there. So I'm not going to ask you to read this because I'm standing right next to it, and I can't read it either, but this is plat language from an HOA, and I pulled out the highlight there above it, but essentially, existing creek or creeks will be maintained by the owners association of the lot or lots that are adjacent to the drainage courses. So when a development typically would come in, they will dedicate the area in a drainage easement, but the ownership would remain with the HOA, and then the plat would dictate who is responsible for the maintenance of that. You know, the, the example down below, obviously very clear, Plano will be responsible for the maintenance for that. So the last few are just as- So the last few are just some example slides, you know, we see all kinds of different types of situations. This is very unique. The development, and it's skipping, I didn't do that, there we go. The development came in in a very phased approach. I'm not touching anything. I don't know who's doing that. Oh, I'm still not touching anything. Is there somebody behind the curtain? We'll try again. All right. So the development was, again, a phased approach. The parcel in orange, you guys see my hands, that's really not me. Just a test. So, but if you can imagine the picture, and there should be in the, there's a description in a packet there in your memo that you received, but the property to the west of that creek is a HOA-owned parcel. And again, it was a phased development, the intent was not for it to be phased, but during the 80s, foreclosures and whatnot, the property on the west is HOA-owned and maintained per the plat. The property in red that you saw on the right side of that is city-owned and maintained. So when that second phase came in, or that next phase came in, the developer requested, there we go, that that to be a city-owned parcel. So we've got to the center of the stream, one owned or one side HOA, one side city. All right, I will try this one. There we go. All right. Here's an example of a individual property owner. So the houses there that you see own to the center of the creek. Interestingly enough, the opposite side of that creek is actually parkland, so the parks maintains the opposite side. You can see a trail there in the upper right corner of the aerial view. Obviously, you can see the extent of the erosion, this bank is, you know, somewhere between 12, 15 feet tall. You can see the fence, I believe Russell was telling me earlier that this fence has been relocated several times because of the erosion. But again, when we go back to the plat, the legal document, it states that the property owners are responsible for the maintenance of this. The last one, again, a fairly unique situation, we've got a pond, lake, if you will, it's about two and a quarter acres, so I'm not sure what the definition, where it switches, but you can see residential development to the north of it, you can see commercial development to the south of it. Obviously, the residential is a lot older, it came in in the late 60s, early 70s. The plat does not say anything about responsibility, there is a dedicated drainage easement, all of the residents, and there's nine of them, that go to the center of that pond. Again, the plat says nothing. The commercial came in later, in the 80s, and theirs says that it's the commercial property, it is their responsibility for the maintenance of it. So just, you know, to give you an idea, the pond is essentially split from a responsibility So last example is a development that came in in the early 80s, if you're familiar with it, it's, they call it Finger Lakes, essentially, it's 16 individual lakes, but all in a row. This was developed, like I said, in the, it's early 80s, late 70s. All of the properties that abut the lakes are a part of a mandatory HOA. The remaining development is a voluntary HOA, and the city has done some work in this area. The very first pond, as it was developed and constructed, this was in the early 80s, development was booming around here, the pond started filling up with sediment, and the city ended up going back and taking it from a natural state to a concrete or sedimentation basin or pond, so that could be maintained easier. So that's the end. I know we do have some speakers, but again, as I mentioned before, we're really looking for some guidance of our current policy. You'll hear from several different speakers, I think a few of them that live in these areas that we showed tonight. What I would like to get is an idea from council on our current policy, if we need to modify it, if we need to change it, then we would come back to you on what the impacts or what some options that we could do to consider that, what the budgetary impact, staff impact, so on and so forth. But with that, I'll end there and open it to any questions you guys may have.
Prior to asking questions, I'd like to hear from the citizens, if that's okay with you, and then we can circle back with Caleb and ask him questions and then give him direction.
Okay, thank you.
So we're going to give every speaker three minutes, and Lisa will call you in the order that we're going to speak.
Thank you. I'm Brent Emke, the President of the Hills of Indian Creek HOA. In 1983, the City Council approved the zoning change for a 380, 360 acre tract for up to 1,092 homes, which ultimately became the Hills of Prestonwood. A requirement in the zoning approval was that there shall be a master homeowners association for the entire tract. In 1984, the first development was Indian Hills Phase 1, and it consisted of 122 homes and ultimately became our HOA. A creek forms one of the boundaries of the development, and 20 home lots are adjacent to the creek. The 1984 plat map lists two drainage lots as Owners Association common property. The HOA covenants list the two creek lots as master common properties. The original developer of the 360 acres failed in 1989 while our development was still in progress. Ultimately, Resolution Trust sold various tracks to a number of new developers. The city never enforced the master HOA. No deed was ever transferred or recorded for the two creek lots identified on our plat map. The Collin County Tax Assessor assigned those, the sole ownership of those two creek lots to our HOA, based exclusively on the plat map. Our HOA position is we were never intended to be the owners of that, of those two creek lots. A deed was never transferred, and therefore, our HOA is not the owner. Presently, portions of the Streambank need remediation, and the City of Plano Engineering Department has provided a report. Even if we were the owners, our HOA dues and annual budget cannot support remediation. Passing special assessments require two-thirds majority making approval improbable. Through no fault of our HOA members, we're assigned ownership. We're asking the city to rectify the issue and take ownership and maintenance responsibility. We have further information that we have shared with the Engineering Department. Stormwater creeks are citywide critical infrastructure, erode over time, and require maintenance repair. How can HOAs with limited resources and volunteer boards that change regularly be expected to raise the funds and manage multi-year, complex engineering and construction projects? It's just not realistic. If individual HOAs are unable to fund repairs, the city will need to step in and resolve the issue. The sooner the city addresses these issues, the less damage will occur. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. The next speaker is John Puskuski.
Good evening. John Puskuski, 1512 West Lake Drive, Plano. Here speaking on the Streambank Stabilization Project. First, I would like to say thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I know it's a difficult time, and you hear a lot of different stuff, and your attention is split many different ways, so the fact that we can stand up here and speak to you means a lot as a resident of Plano. I've been a resident of Plano since 2015. We moved here from Dallas, obviously a bigger conglomerate, and the attention that we get here in Plano feels really, really good compared to that. I would like to quickly say, my wife and my son, we live at 1512 West Lake, and then all the neighbors that are in green also live on West Lake. I think it's important to note that not only neighbors from the West Lake Pond are sitting up there, but also neighbors that live across the street in West Lake who have visited our backyards and seen over the last two years some of the sedimentation and erosion of our streambank. Now, the West Lake Pond is one of them that you were presented, didn't have a name on it, but in Caleb's presentation, Caleb, good to finally meet you in person. We did the whole COVID thing, so a year of Zoom meetings. That West Lake Pond was one that wasn't specified as far as plat language goes, so that would be these residents that are sitting up here. About two years ago, when the construction across Plano Parkway on the south side started, is when our concerns started. Now, in my residence, we're not against construction, actually, we applaud the City Council's comprehensive approach to growth in the city, so, but it is concerning to us when some of that growth ends up in our backyards. I will say that over the last two years that we've seen a floor rising of our pond, estimating two feet, I'm not the specialist, the specialists have been out to the pond and they can speak to that, but what I have noticed is that when my son and I go out to go fishing, there's not a lot of fish left, and there are certain parts of the pond that we cannot maneuver our little boat around. So one of the reasons why I was so excited about moving into this property was because of the little pond in the backyard and my son growing up and being able to go fishing and spending time with neighbors and things of that sort, and we can see that disappearing. So it's a little bit concerning. Some of, the council has been out to my home and seen what that looks like, and once again, very, very appreciative for that attention. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I need to get my son home, so I'll cut this short, but I would like to make a request to council to act on the samples that have been taken. I would like to act on the shores that have been eroded away, and the documents that I provided in the Google form, and on any future impact to our property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rahul Durankar.
Hi, thank you so much, really appreciate your time. I think three minutes will be more than enough for me. I just wanted to come talk to you today, I'm a resident of Plano. I moved here around 2014, living in a house, bought the house because there was a creek behind, beautiful, right? I mean, 100-year-old trees, one by one, past four years, three, four trees have gone, tremendous, tremendous amount of erosion. I live, by the way, on 8328 Barbar Oak Drive, this is off Scenic Drive, and just to give you a visual clue, I did not know that I could show a big poster or, there's some rule against that, so I did not get the picture, but I'll email that out. Behind my property, about three feet or four feet away is a 15-foot drop now. This was not the case when I moved here about five, six years ago. There's huge amount of rapid erosion happening, and that erosion is becoming a big concern for us. We back onto the creek and behind the other side is Andrew's Elementary. As you can imagine, these are kids who run across, sometimes they are hiding in the backyard, our dog wants us when kids go, and we, because of that, I tried to put some temporary fans so that kids don't go near this area, but it's becoming also a safety hazard. So these are real, real problems, and we, I mean, I have been trying to work with Russell and Allison, and I think they have visited, looked at the property, they rated it medium-high. When you live there, it doesn't feel medium at all, right? I mean, I just want to give a perspective, because medium-high, all these scales we look at, but when you really come and look at the, thank you so much, Shelby, I think you had come and looked at it, I mean, it's scary, right? And, and what I have tried after that is, we spoke to the city and we spoke to the HOA, we just need help. This is a project that I don't think the HOA alone can take on, and what started out as a dream home, I love Plano, right? I chose this, I had many options to pick from, but really love Plano, and I really bought this as a dream home, and it's kind of becoming a nightmare, and I would really appreciate if you can step in and help out, make it back into a dream home by supporting the HOA as well as some way of reinforcing the erosion that is happening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
My name is Joey Seven, Marilyn, my wife, and I live at 2520 Napperton Drive in Plano. We've been here for 17 years. Thank you for listening to the city of, the citizens of Plano. It tells me that us, that you care, and it's really important to us. You've heard Rell just speaking about his house and his backyard, and it's, it's pretty serious, because he's, he's serious, we have a photograph, three or four feet from the edge of his house to the fence to the drop-off. And like you said, kids play back there all the time. So what we're looking for is, our request is, we need your help to address the streambank erosion within the estates of Wooded Cove, to provide a safe environment for our families and to prevent the loss of life and property caused by erosion. I mean, can you imagine, you know, eight feet, 12 feet of water rushing through and some kid falling in? It's pretty serious. We request that you fund the project behind Barbar Oak, which is Rell's house, and we have another situation on Quentin Drive, okay, that's got a similar problem. But, so please include these two sites in your Streambox stabilization, Streambank Stabilization budget, and the remainder of this fiscal year, if possible, and in next fiscal year. Then help us to monitor the health of the Streambank going forward, because things change over time. So we want to help, help us monitor those. And then, number five, the last bullet, is recommend how we can help you and the Streambank program to be successful all throughout Plano going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Michael Hale.
Good evening. I'm the President of the HOA, the first two gentlemen in front of me went Estates at Wooded Cove, my name's Michael Hale, I live at 8604 Quentin Point Drive, and I'm representing the 158 homeowners within that HOA impacted by the erosion currently outside the scope of the City of Plano's responsibility. In our situation, the creek, in our situation, there's a creek that starts to the north of our property, and, and it starts with two large storm drainage deposits of rainwater just to the north, and basically, all the communities to the north of us are dropping water in, out of these drainage facilities into a creek behind our homes. The creek, Greenbelt area, meanders through the community for about approximately a quarter of a mile, picking up volume from every storm drain along the way. To the south of the community, it connects up with a larger creek drainage system, we believe maintained by the City of Plano. So we're kind of in the middle of this pipeline here. During rain events, it's an awesome and scary sight to witness. The roaring rapids at Six Flags is what you would think of it as. With that said, we are requesting assistance from the City of Plano in resolving what we perceive as a critical erosion issue. We attempted to plan and plan for and resolve this issue as a community, but quickly realized it was bigger than we could prepare and handle on our own. Every four to five years, we bring outside engineering firms to come into our community, they do reserve study, reserve studies for us, give us an idea of what it's going to take to maintain the property over the next 15 to 20 years. In the last study that was done in 2018, it was determined that we were going to need to put about $25,000 into this Greenbelt Creek erosion area to help stabilize it for our own homeowners. One of the areas, and not even Rell's area, which was deemed more critical, one of the the less critical issues was identified as a property that, it was, let me get there in just a second. The reserve study- The reserve study was fully funded. We've done our part there. We took the study very seriously and we made sure that our account, our reserve accounts had enough money to take care of the problem. Middle to late 2021, we had two separate erosion issues, erosion issues that were brought forward to the city and they were brought to the HOA. On both occasions, the city said, hey, we can't help you here. And the HOA took over based upon the current operating practices. One of those initiatives, at that point, we did see that it was a significant issue. We went and we got to an outside firm and the, the one bid that we got was $193,000 to take care of one situation. On top of that, it costs us $3,600 just to have that outside firm give us the quote to do that work. So, very quickly, this got way out of our, our, our control and we had nothing to do. We've, with that, I would just like to say, anything that you guys could do to help us out would be greatly appreciated. It's just, we're over our heads at this point, as you're hearing from a lot of the speakers, so.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Matthew Kingsley and he will be joining us via Zoom. Mr. Kingsley, if you can hear me, if you can turn on your camera and unmute yourself. There we go.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, in June of 2019, a tree on the, on the HOA side of property of, all right, let me turn down my volume to get rid of. In June of 2019. Give me one second. Okay, in June of 2019, there was a tree in the HOA side of our creek that fell onto my home. This is when I became aware and several members of our board of directors of our HOA became aware of this being an HOA responsibility. This tree created substantial damage to our, to our property and presented a, a, a situation where, where my family could have been seriously injured. They were watching the, the storm and what looks very much like Whitewater Rapids flowing through our creek through a window at the time. The tree fell against that window and limbs broke against that window and they were not harmed, but it could have been very different for them and could be a very different story and I hope to prevent that by telling the, telling this story today. One of, one of the things that I'd hope to present, but see, I cannot share my screen, is, is a pretty substantial Gabian wall that was built 30 years ago on our stream, stream bank. This is a massive, you know, wall that, that is much like the ones that you've seen created by the city of Plano as, as city infrastructure. This sits on the HOA side of, of our stream bank and it is, it is not something that, that an HOA is equipped to, to maintain. It needs maintenance and it's in need of repair. And in some places, it's sloped and in some places, it's, it's deteriorated quite substantially. If you were to look at this, this creek today, you'd, you could step across it. There's, it is so, it is so, so calm, but when it rains.
18 seconds.
You thought what must be millions of gallons rushing at 50 miles per hour through this state in many areas unprotected or, or in significant need of repair. One of the, one of the additional things learned in this event is that.
Mr. Kingsley, your time is up, if you could please wrap up your comments.
Blood insurance will not cover erosion and the homeowners of our 130 people HOA.
All right, next speaker, please, thank you.
M A Clock. Hi, I'm Mary Agnes Clock, live in West Plano in the hills of Indian Creek, where Brent M. Key is our HOA president. I'm a former HOA president. The gentleman that was just speaking to you lives next door to me. His name, Matthew Kingsley, we're the hills of Indian Creek. We were established many decades ago. One of the things I would like to bring to everyone's attention is that Brent has done a significant amount of research in the last year since we were re-elect, I'm sorry, I'm a former president, so I was elected again. But this current board was elected March of last year. Since that time, Brent has gone through a significant amount of work to research our creek situation. You have a nine-page document that I've proofed about, I can't tell you how many hours. If you'll take the time to read it, it's an enlightening education, not just for you all, but for our 122 HOA members. And I put a test in there, there are two typos, and if you catch them, you're going to be really good. I'll know if you've read it or not. But I appreciate all that you all do. I've been in city council meetings since 2001. I'm a resident since June of 99, 23 years this year. It's incredible what you all do when you have your city council meetings. Amazing, I had forgotten and I need to start attending more of them. So, thank you for your service, thank you for everything.
Thank you, and I guarantee council member Grady will find both typos. He is an expert typo finder.
I am too, so you let me know what you find and I'll, there are two, two. I tried to kill myself after I found them. I just, I had looked at it so many times, I went blind, so.
It's a challenge now, I'm sure he'll be emailing you when he finds them.
Okay, thank you all.
Next speaker. The last speaker is Mayor Nasser.
Hello. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our concerns. So, we reside at 7724 Wasland Drive, Plano. Our house is suffering from a severe erosion problem due to the Russell Creek that's in our backyard. And the problem is very critical to the point where our foundation is at high risk. The erosion is happening about two to three meters away from our house. We reach out to the city of Plano, we reach out to the HOA offices, and neither were able to help us. The city of Plano now are presenting this to you guys so you can take decisive decisions. And I would like to bring a few bullet points that would help you make the decision. The first bullet point I would like to mention is that our neighbor, who is adjacent to our house, had his retaining wall done by the city of Plano a few years back. A couple, a couple of houses down the road from us on the same Wasland Drive also had the retaining wall done by the city of Plano. And these retaining walls were about 30 to 40 meters away from their house foundation. Our house foundation is about two to three meters away from the erosion. During the rain season, which is right now, the Russell Creek floods in a way that it hits that erosion point and makes it excessive. So, the erosion is happening at an excessive speed as we speak. I think our foundation is probably going to last about two to three years if it keeps eroding at this speed. I'm no expert, but this is just what people told me, the contractors that I brought into my house to give me estimates, and unfortunately, we cannot afford to build a commercial retaining wall, wall for a public utility. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that all the speakers? Okay. So, council, do you have any questions for Caleb? All right, council number two.
So, I, I have a few questions. First of all, let's first address the, the very last comment. That it seems like there is a appearance that some stream bank stabilization project is being shouldered and responsible by City Plano and some are told that their HOA need to be responsible for. So, I, I want you to clarify that first and then we'll, I'll have a few other questions after that.
Okay. So, in that situation, I believe that picture is from the individual owner example that I showed you in the presentation. The plat language for that individual property owner indicates that the individual owner is responsible for the maintenance. Now, in 2000, 2001, somewhere in that time, the city did do a project in that area and for what reasons, we don't have that information. Our understanding is that project was done to a point before Mr. Nasser moved in there. The previous owner said they did not want the wall on their property. There, I think a portion of it extends into the property, I believe it was 15 feet or so, but they said that's as far as you can go. And that happened in 2001 or 2002.
I, I don't think that answered my question. My question is, what is the determination as to what part of the stabilizing project is, will be responsible by Plano and what part of it is HOA responsible or individuals responsible? And I think that, I, I think that's, that's the part that got me confused because if all the streams are, should be responsible by all the different HOA or individual residents, then that, that, I mean, that makes sense to me that we, we now come back and say, well, is it possible that we could, the city of Plano could assist or subsidize? But if there are certain parts that are responsible by, by city and certain parts are not, I don't know how that is distinguished or how that was differentiated.
So, Deputy Mayor Protem, I think that's, that's part of the challenge of our current program is the current program is we go by what's on the plat. If the plat says it's the HOA, it's the HOA. If the plat says it's the resident, it's the resident. And if the plat is silent or says the city, we're saying it's the city. So, right now, what we have is we have some scenarios, as Caleb showed with the map, that kept disappearing rapidly every time he got near the screen, that half the stream was, was one way and half the stream was the other. Those are some of the challenges that we're seeing. And so, we have some that are commercial and residential, some that have HOA versus city. We have a number of scenarios throughout the city that it's not consistent. And that's part of the challenge of this. So, right now, what we rely on for our program is the plat. And I guess the question at hand is, does council want us to bring back options that would indicate a change in our current approach for that policy?
Well, I, I think before we even get there, I think one of the first thing I would like to know would be what part of, you know, that we're talking about? I mean, what part of the plat, I mean, the, the plats are with, with need for stabilization? Is the responsibility of City Plano, what part is, is not? I mean, if we get somewhat of a percentage of, I, I understand that. I mean, I, what I really want to know is what part of it really need work?
So, Caleb, have we done a complete assessment of the waterways? Because we have 138 miles. Do we have a, a percentage that, I guess we've clarified as the low, medium, medium-high? We, we, have we done that from a comprehensive perspective?
Yeah. Doesn't sound like, there it goes. We have not. I mean, that's, so if you take that down to the 8.6 miles and again, imagining the, the criteria, the, the sheet that Russell and Allison work on, you know, approximately eight, 12, 16 hours per property and doing that for eight miles, we, we have not done that. Right now, we focused on what has been our responsibility and what hasn't. And I think to your point, and, and I think this is where you're going, is out of that 8.6 miles, not all 8.6 miles would require a project. And that's more than likely correct.
Well, in addition to that, I mean, I'm trying to figure out how much this is going to cost. I mean, obviously, we're in the budget session and we definitely want to respond to something that could be a safety issue. But I, I don't want to favor one, one area over another if, you know, I mean, we're all Plano residents and, and I want to make sure that if that's going to be something that we need to be considering in budget, then that's something that we need to consider as a whole in the big picture rather than one small plats at a time.
Council member two, I don't think we need to factor in the budget tonight because there hasn't even been a policy developed. I think we just need to let him know if we want them to go down the road of developing a policy and when they bring that back, they will let us know budget implications at that time. Is that correct?
We can, we can come up with various scenarios, but for example, the, the Gabian wall project, and I see mayor has his finger moving. So, just, just saying, see you mayor. But, but Caleb, Caleb, can you share, can you share with us, one of the Gabian wall projects? Do we know the, the cost of a Gabian wall for, say, I think you were saying 18, there you go.
Sorry, I'm going the wrong way, I apologize. Yeah, so, oh, there we go. Independence Parkway, so this was a million-dollar project. Now, it's not just the location that you see on the map. It was a, and what we will typically do is group, set together. So, you know, it may be, we'll go get a complaint or a concern brought up to us from one citizen and we end up looking upstream and downstream, like I said. So, while one property may have 75, 100 feet of footage, the final wall may end up being 400 feet long. So, it's going to cover multiple properties. But from an estimate standpoint, we, you know, our rough estimate is somewhere between $200 and $300 a square foot of the Gabian wall. Obviously, there's many variables as far as the height, the length that would impact that. But, you know, imagine a 100-foot, a property that has 100-foot of frontage on a creek or backage, however you want to look at that, that the wall averages a 10-foot height at $300 a square foot, it's going to be around a $300,000. And I think Mr. Nasser mentioned that his estimate was around 200. But obviously, there's many variables that impact that.
Mayor, did you want to make a comment?
Well, I, I think the real question for tonight is, is to get, ask, ask staff for feedback on what options we really do have. And I think that's really all we're, we're asking for or, or just leave it alone. But I, I would love to see what, what options we have available that would, for, for, for those that do have some questionable plats that go back 40 and 50 years, those are, those are issues that, that, you know, would, would fall into those categories. Others that would have options to improve the, the area in the back, that would be, you know, good for me to know. And, and without that information, I, I don't think I can make a, make a, you know, qualified decision. So, I, I really would like to hear what those options would be.
Council member Homer.
Yeah, I grew up on Pittman Creek, so I, I know, we moved in the 81 over to Edgewater, backed up to Carmel, and there were no houses next to us or behind us on the creek. And I remember in the 80s, them putting in, I think it was the late 80s or early 90s, putting up a Gabian wall. And I don't know how that was determined, that it was the city or whatever. But I, I, I really liked what the first speaker said about creeks and ponds and our waterwise, waterways being essential to our entire city's wastewater management and flood management. And that's one thing I hadn't really thought about. I looked at it more of, well, you have the luxury of a pond in your backyard or a creek and you're, you know, benefiting from the, the landscape and the ambiance and all of that. But we all, as citizens, benefit from our floodwater going somewhere and going somewhere safely. as citizens benefit from our floodwater going somewhere and going somewhere safely. So, looking at it from that standpoint, I think it is something that all citizens benefit from. So, I would like to have staff make some recommendations and look to see what other cities are doing. I do understand that it's legal for us to go in and spend tax dollar money on land that we do not own, so it's my understanding that we would need to make some, there would need to be some changes made, easements, or something to allow us permission to do that, but, you know, I see that as kind of being part of our infrastructure here in Plano that I know it's important to all of us to invest in, so it remains in good shape. So, I would like to make a motion for staff to put together some proposals.
Yeah, okay. I don't think we have to make a motion tonight, but I hear that you support the direction to move forward. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Caleb, I'm all for giving you guys a direction to look at options, and I think if it's a question, we err on the side of our citizens because especially something from the 80s and people who, you know, weren't aware and certain details didn't happen, I mean, that's not their fault, and when you have, especially like the one, I think there's like four different HOAs that are involved in this one area, and three of them, you know, are taken care of or maintained by the city, and the one, the original one, isn't. That's really not a fair thing because we, ultimately, the city is responsible for safety and infrastructure, and I think all that. So, I'd like to see your ideas. You tell us what you think. You're our expert, and come back to us, and then let us make some good decisions from there.
So, we'll say on that situation, the city owns, for whatever reason, the city owns that side, and I'll go back to the example.
Oh, is that the one where it's a one and one?
That is. The city owns that side. The rest of that development, as it was developed, is all HOA-owned throughout the rest of that whole area. So, and I think that's what, when we come back with different options, it won't be taking over this small 20 or so that along the creek or the 122. It'll likely be taking over a 300, 400, 500 community if we're going to take over, because we won't be able to pick and choose, and I think that's what we'll present you some options, but that'll be something then to take into consideration.
Well, it's going to affect our city, I think, from a wastewater standpoint, whatever, long-term, so.
Not wastewater. We don't put wastewater.
Well, I'm sorry, not wastewater, but, yeah, but from drainage and everything else.
Sorry, not to be an engineer on that one.
Yeah, being an HOA board member myself, I understand that. We've dealt with something. We have a creek that goes through ours, but, yeah, I'd definitely like to see some options, and again, let's keep the point of our citizens in mind and really come up with some things that we can do to help them if all possible.
Councilmember Williams.
Thank you. Caleb, out of all of the projects that we've evaluated and ranked, did you know roughly how many that number is of projects that qualify under our program?
So, I'm going to let Allison answer that. Do you have that number?
Yes, we have. Right now, on our sites that qualify, we have 33.
33, okay. Do you happen to have any idea how many were evaluated but do not qualify, and the dollar values of each, rough dollar values?
I can get it for you.
If you don't have it on the spot, don't worry, we can get it later.
Every property that we evaluate goes on the list. They may stay there forever because they rate, out of 100 scale, they rated as 17. You know, they came out and said, the tree fell over, can you look at this? And we look at it, and, you know, there's no concern, but we will leave them on there as an evaluation. And what we will end up doing from the procedure standpoint, we have multiple entries for the same property, so they may come back in five years and say, hey, can you guys come back out and take a look? It's starting to move again, whatever the situation may be. So, we constantly, we have that database that has that historical information in there.
Okay.
So, do you have that?
Since 2018, we've evaluated 162 sites.
Okay. And 33 of them are on the list, okay. And do you know why? I mean, there are a lot of green belts that are under HOA maintenance, but specifically where it comes to streams, do you know why a plat might say even the erosion control is on an HOA or a property owner? Because, you know, go ahead.
No, no, no. I was going to say, so our subdivision ordinance requires a green belt or a creek or stream to be dedicated in the drainage easement, but it also has to be owned by either an entity, which is typically an HOA, or the city. Now, some HOAs will keep ownership simply to keep their own ownership, and it's for their citizens. I was talking with Allison earlier this week. She lives in a different city, but she has a creek behind her. The city owns that creek, and so there's people that can go back there. So, that may be one of the reasons, but it has to be owned by entity that has the maintenance responsibility.
All right. It occurs to me that something like a stream is subject to externalities and change over time that most of the rest of our properties aren't, not least of which, as was pointed out, over 30 or 40 years' worth of growth, the sheer quantity of water coming down a stream when it storms could be radically different now than it was back when an HOA said, yeah, sure, we'll take it, why not?
Well, and like everything, criteria changes. In the late 70s, early 80s, the capacity was based on the current land use. As time has changed, the land uses have changed, so, I mean, it's, we've got systems throughout the city, and obviously, you know, other cities have the same issue where they're just, they don't have the capacity that they were designed for because things have changed.
Okay, yeah, because there can be dramatic and sudden changes. Like, when I visited Ravel's house, a tree had fallen across the creek, and that took with it probably two or three yards' worth of soil. Okay, I would like to see policy options.
Councilmember Rick Adley.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Thank you for all of this information, Caleb. I was wondering, with, you know, like the example that's on the screen right now where we have the HOA on the west side and the city on the east side being responsible for maintenance, historically, how was that decision made? Was it just the four-to-one ratio in the 1981 ordinance, or was it more ad hoc, you know, in each of the plats, you know, when the plats were being drafted? You know, was it just negotiations with each individual developer, or how were those decisions made?
So, I can tell you what's based on our current criteria, and that goes back to the requirement for an entity to own it. A developer will make that decision whether they're going to establish an HOA. Now, talking with Christina Day and Planning, the Planning Director, if it has a mixed retail, so I'll use the Heritage Creekside, they may use that channel as a open space requirement to meet that requirement. So, the development just south of Plano Parkway has that mixed use. They use that to meet that criteria. Why this one was done this way, you know, Mr. M. Key, we've talked several times, it's been nothing but, you know, professional, and I really appreciate that. But this was supposed to be a master-planned HOA. It, you know, unfortunately, it was in the 80s, things changed, it got sold off. The rest of this area, and this is what I looked at this morning or this afternoon, the entire, every other area along a creek is owned by, or owned and maintained by an HOA, except for that red piece. Why it was done, and I think 89, 91, whatever it ended up being for that phase, I can't tell you that.
Okay, well, thank you for that information, Caleb. And I guess my comments on this, I also support looking at options. I think it's good to know what our options are. Obviously, we're going to have to put some work in and have a more focused discussion about the details, but it would be good to know what the options are, and I think as we're looking at those options, something we should look at is the issue of ownership of the improvements. I'd personally be more comfortable if the city owns the improvements, both, you know, kind of looking at them as infrastructure, like Councilmember Holmer was mentioning, you know, if the city's going to build infrastructure, that's a public improvement. I think it would make sense for the city to own that. Also, you know, there are access issues like we heard about, you know, with the property owner back in 2001 or 2002, saying, you know, no, I don't want this on my property, and now, of course, we're seeing the consequences of that, that it would have been better if that stream bank stabilization had occurred at that point. So, I think that's something to look at in the criteria for this.
So, just to clarify a little bit on that, nearly all of these, we have a drainage easement, so they can't go in and put a dam, they can't put a bridge, whatever the situation must be or would be, because as a part of our process for a channel like that, we're going to require it. Now, flood study may change the existing, you know, configuration of it slightly. We don't allow them to change it too much. The most extreme case would be Spring Creek under Collin Creek Culvert. We haven't never done that again, but, so, we have a drainage easement in place. The situation that you referred to, and I believe that's along Wasland, what they needed to actually go on, the property owner, is because these structures, the Gabians, they actually have nails that go in underneath into the earth, and they end up on private property, so we have to expand that easement to install these. So, that was the reason that we requested it at that time, and they said you can go to this point and no more.
I see. Well, thank you for that clarification. I think that would be good to look at, those were, you know, fashioning this program, so thank you for that information.
Final comment, Councilmember Key.
It's not a comment, it's a question. So, I remember, you were, I'm sorry, the only lady that's sitting over there, about the 35 projects that's currently, you believe that needs additional stabilization and work, are they all City of Plano projects, or are they private projects?
Some have had, I'm not sure, but most of them are private property with a city drain easement that doesn't allocate the maintenance to an HOA or individual property owner, so the city takes responsibility for the maintenance.
I see. So, that's the, the 35 is really just what Plano currently have on their books?
On their list, yes.
Okay, but we're not dealing with all the private ones, right? Yes, I would like to see some recommendations, just like everybody else. I like to see it in whole, a big picture. I don't want one individual project at a time. That's my opinion.
So, it sounds like you have your direction to bring back some suggestions for us. Thank you. All right, and with no further business, we will adjourn our meeting.